So it's 5:04. So we went into recess Monday, March 11th. So this evening, we're just coming out of recess. Just as a quick follow-up to last night's meeting, I did receive numerous comments with regards to the language and the tone used in this chamber, especially regarding the role of staff. So this language does not lend itself to the creation of a safe working environment. Therefore, I ask that you keep your language and tone respectful at all times. Staff, everybody, because this chamber is live streamed, so people were watching it last night and could hear it loud and clear. So please, we're here in a public arena, and we have to respect that we have staff that work with us, and in order to provide a safe working environment, respect goes both ways. Okay, I think we left off at Parks and Recreation, and we're going to Fire. That's the next one. Correct? John, Councilor McLeire?
That's correct, Your Worship. Yeah, just as you indicated, we recessed from Monday, the March 11th, at the start of the capital budget, and we had Public Works and Parks and Recreation that have completed. We're going into Fire. The only thing that's different than what we'll be looking at this evening, since Monday, I understand, the staff, there's been some adjustments made that will be shown on our screens here, on some things that were talked about on Monday's budget deliberations. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Twill.
Couple of things. So there were some adjustments made in the Parks and Recreation budget, so we flagged them, and they were going to be deal with it afterwards, right?
We're going through all the budgets, and then...
And then we'll come back.
Yeah, I'm taking note. So was Danny, and I don't know who Betty is, but I am, so we'll compare notes at the end of it.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah.
As long as we're coming back. Second thing is, was brought up here at the last meeting...
Mondays?
Yeah, Monday's meeting, yeah. The Council Bernard, to his credit, brought up about the revenues. So do we have a spreadsheet of revenues over the last two or three years, projected for the next two or three years? Spreadsheet of revenues and expenditures, so that when we're dealing with these capital projects, you know, unfortunately, what's happened in the community is that what's been painted out in the community, it's doom and gloom. And, you know, we've got to cut back, we don't have the money, we're not going to be able to provide the infrastructure. And I need to see all the information before, you know, I can arrive at that conclusion. So again, I'll reiterate what was stated here Monday night. I'm looking for a spreadsheet on the revenues and expenditures, so that we have a full picture when we're going through these departments, and more specifically, the line items. So do we have that?
Are you asking me, or are you asking Councilor McLeire?
Well, thank you, Councilor Twill, for that. I'll defer that to CFO Danny Jenkins, and for an answer to your question, Councilor.
Thank you, Councilor McLeire, through Your Worship, to Councilor Twill. So yes, certainly, we do have that, and it's been provided in the information that you have. So on the operational budget, there are numbers there for last year's budget, this year's budget. The actuals, in terms of historical, actual results would best source is the audited financial statements. But if you wanted an analysis of something in particular, we can certainly provide that for you.
Danny, what I'm looking for, I want to have a spreadsheet. The spreadsheet clearly illustrates the expenditures and the revenues. You know, we keep referring back to, you know, you've taken us back three or four years, back into the whole period of COVID, and then we come out of COVID, weren't able to do projects, and, you know, you went to great lengths to bring that to the forefront, and that's fine, that's fine. But as we're moving forward, I mean, we're having record growth and development in this city, right? The city is not lacking in money, but it's great for me to say that, but I need to see the revenues, as we're, you know, this year, anticipated growth and development for, you know, say, the next two or three years. So when we're lining up our capital projects and looking at operational expenditures, I think that gives us a much better insight, and we're becoming much more informed as to where exactly we are, because right now, it's hard to get a sense. And I mean, all due respect, I'll reiterate, the picture was painted is that doom and gloom. Now, whether that's the intention or not, I'm not sure, Danny, and I'm not trying to be critical, but that's the picture that was painted in the community. That's what was picked up on. And I don't, I got to see, I got to see the revenues, I have to see the expenditures. I don't believe, and please tell me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe it's doom and gloom. I really don't believe that for one minute.
Betty, do you have the operational budget there?
I have it on the screen.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
Can we just put it up on the screen? Okay, this is part of the profits and losses. It's the first half. I thought I had it open here. Okay, there you are. So property taxes, 2324, the budget was 43,000, 43.5 million. What came in was 43,100,000. Budget for 2425, 46,100,000. I'm just provincial grant, that's the grant that they give us because of what they collect and then what they give back, which is a taxing equity. 18 million was budgeted in 2023, 18.5, what came in was 19.4. So we were off the budget by about a million dollars. This year, we're budgeting 20,400,000. Planning, you go through them, there they are. We went over this the other night on the 11th. If you want the property tax broken down, that will come in the budget when we get this document, because if you remember, and as I said, Councilor Twill, you've been here since 94.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. 1994, to be exact.
Just go right here.
Yeah.
I don't have that in front of me, I don't have the book in front of me.
No, but it breaks it down. So, so, no, but when we were going through it...
Yeah.
...the other night...
Right.
We weren't referencing, we were not referencing the revenues, projected revenues for this year and forecasts for the next two or three years, right? And what was stated here was, well, we've got to cut back, got to cut back for a variety of reasons. And I don't think the message has gotten out to the community as to what the revenues, that's coming into the city of Charlestown, for us to be able to provide, effectively provide the capital projects that are required, infrastructure renewal, and what we need to do in terms of operational. That message has not gotten out to the community. So what I would like to do, as we're going through the process, tonight, we're going to be discussing capital, see how far we get, I'd like to make sure that that message is conveyed to the community, so they'll have the full picture as to what we are actually dealing with.
Yeah.
Because again, I'll reiterate, and I'm not being critical, but the message that was conveyed to the community was that it was doom and gloom.
Yeah.
And I don't believe for one minute it's doom and gloom.
No. So let's...
So can I just get a response from Danny?
Yeah, no, just one second, just one second. Okay. I think Eleanor, our CAO, announced the other night, this is the first time we've gone live-streamed with our budget process, so it's a different process. Anyone that's watching, and that's why I said, as a follow-up to last night's meeting, I received numerous comments about disrespect in this chamber. So everybody's watching, but if they want to get a breakdown, we will be having, hosting an open house tomorrow from 7:00 to, is it 5:00?
6:00 till 7:30.
6:00 till 7:30. And I will be up here, I'm sure other councils will be up here, to listen to what our finance department has to say, our environment sustainability department, they'll be here to explain this. So to get down, if you want to start going between the two budgets, to show the revenue, we'll be here, there'll be a lot of switching back and forth of screens. I think we'll have to start on the Fire, and your questions have been taken into consideration. We have to move on. No. What's the last one?
For the record...
Yeah.
There's no disrespect here. I'm not promoting any disrespect. I'm trying to do my due diligence.
Yeah.
So I'm going to have to take issue with that.
Yeah.
Please do not try to label me as being disrespectful. I'm trying to, no, hold it. I got the floor.
Couple of planners.
I'm trying, no, I got the floor.
Yeah.
I'm trying to be accurate, I'm trying to do my due diligence.
Yeah.
And I'm trying to follow the process in a very informed, meaningful way.
Yeah.
So please don't use words that are not accurate.
No, they are accurate, because last night, there was, yeah, well, they are with me, because I was here, and I got calls and received comments about some of our planners and what they were doing. We have very professional planners here. Donna Miller-Aitin, our manager for Policy and Heritage, works very hard. David Gundrum works very hard. Our CAO works very hard. Michael Ross is a planner. The planners that are working down there, I think these comments are related to keeping our focus on respect on what we're doing in this chamber. And that's why that live stream is, again, painting, projecting an image that we're not respectful. I want it remains respectful, because if you want respect, you must give respect. It's pretty simple. I've taught for 30 years, it's a pretty simple rule that you start off in the school here. So let's go to Fire.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll hand it over to Fire Chief Tim Mamie, to walk us through the Fire budget.
I believe you're going to put it up, are you, Dan?
There you go.
Perfect. Here we go. Thank you, Your Worship, members of council, CAO, Dan. Rather simple budget to walk through here, capital buys for the Fire Department, if everybody wants to have a look, keeping in mind the threshold that was established for projects that we were talking about. Only have two in the capital side. One is the carryover, which is the fast rescue craft, that's the boat replacement, so that money will be carried forward, or will be re-asked in '24, '25 to carry that project through. We're very hopeful to be, to finish that project this year and have a new craft delivered. And the other is to replace and upgrade the SCBA's, which is 230,000 this year. It's a $1.25 million, five-year replacement project. So this will replace our self-contained breathing apparatuses, which are the packs that members wear on their backs whenever they're in a immediately dangerous to life and health environment. So when you can't breathe the air, these packs run. And the new upgrades to them, that's not a reasonable facsimile there, but it's a, the new packs have lunar technology, which is search and rescue aid, basically. So the command post can follow firefighters and locate them when they're lost or disoriented in a building, and help the rapid intervention crew get in there and do an immediate grab and rescue. So it helps in that matter, it also helps with control, accountability on scene, so those are all the upgrades that are available on the new packs, and we're hoping to move that way. The reason for a five-year project, spread over five years, is the large lump sum payment, and also helps us a little bit with maintaining our inventory and keeping things current so that they don't time out of life expectancy. Before we go into EMO, we can answer any questions, or...
Councilor Twill?
Thank you, Chief. I think the last time you were in here, we were talking about the new fire station, we put a pause on the fire station, and I indicated to you at the time, that we come in with a design, exceptional design, and we're looking at the construction of a new fire station in the northern part of the city. I stated that we got to do it right the first time. And what I mean by that is, having all the proper amenities, and not just building something and then wishing we would have had the full, the full package. All I have to do is look over to Stratford and see what they've done. We're the capital city, I reiterate what I said before, we're the capital city. I believe we should be leading by example. So it's not that I'm looking for the Taj Mahal, that's not what I'm looking for. I'm looking for a fire station that's going to provide good services to our community, particularly in that part of the, that part of the city, for the next 40 to 50 years, looking ahead with that vision. So that's what I'm asking, Chief, is that the type of facility that our, that our community, our firefighters, and our councils, councils from here on in can look forward to?
Yes, Councilor Twill, through Your Worship, very much in line with my thoughts, exactly. That's why we're carrying out the Fire Underwriters Survey, that's actively undergoing as we speak. We're hoping to have the first draft in, in June. What that is, is a full review of the city geographically, as it currently sits, and with the 10-year forecast following the official plan, is to determine the number of stations required and the location for those stations, ideally within the city. So once that's determined, that'll be the next thing, is determining where that location is and moving forward with that station build. The only money in the budget this year, capital budget for a fire station, is the carryover of design money to complete and finish off the design that was partially completed on the proposed station that was going on the vacant lot, along, out in the West Royalty area. But that, as far as that goes, there's no money in there for a new build of the capital, of capital this year.
Counselor Twill, just, no, I had some of them, and it went off. Councilor Ramsey, you were on, and I dropped off the screen there. Go ahead. And so, Matt Tarn, Councilor Matt Tarn, put yours up there, too.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, Chief, and I should know the answer to this, since I'm the chair, but at the same time, I've been asking, when the fast response craft was in there years ago, was there, there's still no partner funding coming in for that, since there, like, didn't have our waters, really, you know? I'm just wondering, even if we had a, if from the feds or something, we got 100, and, you know, something like that, it's going to bring the cost way down, so I just wonder if any response is that.
Yes, Chair, through Your Worship. Once again, we are pursuing that avenue, we don't have any partner funding in line at this point, but we continue to do some research and see what we are able to attain in that regard.
Counselor Tarn.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the Chief. So I just want to go back to your comment regarding the Fire Station 3, design and build. You said that 132 was carryover from last year's capital, just in regard to the design and build aspects, not an actual build itself. I'm not seeing, you know, and I guess I'm a bit confused, because I didn't, I wasn't sure that we landed on where we are in the big grand scheme of Fire Station 1, 2, and 3. We were waiting for the underwriters' report, I believe, and so I don't see even long-term any plans for a new fire station from a capital in the next five years, or am I missing that? Even if we approve that or disagree, so this is really, like, I guess, why are we doing design work and build work, the design and build, if we don't know if we're even going with a third station? I know the work's already started, as you indicated. Can you elaborate on that a little bit, unless I'm missing something here?
Certainly, Councilor Tarn, through Your Worship. The fire station design and build was undertaken two and a half years ago, and we have about 95 to 99% completed on the actual design. And that was at the time, looking at as a fire station number three at the lot the city purchased out off of Sherwood Road. At the time I became chief, we halted the project as we needed this underwriter survey. So before we can put any money forward into the long-term capital expenditure plan over the five years, we need this survey done to determine exactly what we need, where we need it, and how many of them we need, and then the ask will be coming forward once we get that information to educate us all.
Okay, so this is just to complete that work, then finish up that 132.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Twill.
Chief, again, to reinforce what I said the last time we had the discussion, I'm hopeful that there'll be a community component attached to the fire station as well. What that looks like, I'm not really sure, but I believe we need to take advantage of that opportunity as well, because, you know, the fire stations are embedded in the fabric of the community, and, you know, it's the lifeblood of the community. So I just wanted to add that as well.
Okay. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Councilor Twill, through Your Worship. That's exactly where our mindset is as well. We've been in the design process through the last number of years, is looking at that as well, as both stations in the city now have a community accessible area, that they have at second floor at Station 2, and at the third floor at Station 1. That is much in mind with what we are thinking in going forward with any station that the city is going to endeavor to build.
Okay. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship, to the Chief. Just a question, I think you alluded, 425,000 for the fast response craft, is that all carryover, or is any of that new money requested this year? And then can you, how old is the current boat that you have now? Is it something that's immediate, that needs to be replaced?
Thank you, Councilor McKinnon, through Your Worship. Our current vessel is in excess 20 years old. It's outlived its life expectancy, it's kept in very good shape, because we do service and maintenance on it rather strictly on an annual basis, or biannual, as it may occur. But the only new money involved in the 425 would be a slight increase due to percentage of increase in costs and the value of the dollar. But all the other money is just a carryover from last year's approval, and we're hoping once again to finalize this and finish off quickly in the new year.
Okay. Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. One, I think, I want to go back to what Councilor Twill had said about the revenue, and I think what was brought up the other night was how we come up to, you know, our revenues are showing up about 4, 4.5 million from previous year, and how we come up with a figure for the amount of capital that the cities can afford. In the last few years, it was 64, 65, and down to 55. And our revenues are up a little bit, but we haven't gone through the actual revenues and expenditures. So I think that was the question I was asked, that we have to go through the revenues and see where, I guess, why capital is down to 55 million, or that's what they're saying we can afford, and so we have to go through the revenue and see where it is, because what I'm seeing, the revenue, last year was 77 million, and right now, we're up to a little over 80 million, 80.5, so. Question I had for Chief, so the fire station, I was under, I was under the understanding that the fire station design was done, and we were prepared to go to tender. So... So if we were done and prepared to go to tender, what's changed now that we want to do another design? Because the location may change, is that what you were saying?
No, Counsel Bernard, through your worship, there's been no change, and we're not planning any new design. The fire hall design and build was never fully completed. It was in the, as I mentioned before, the 99% mark, as we've used with our, both our consultant and with the service provider. So it's never been 100% completed, and the reason for that is that we haven't moved forward to go towards a tender and build process at this point, until we finished the fire underwriter survey. So there's no new design going on or no new work being planned. Everything is in the fire underwriters' hands to come back with our, with the recommendations for that, and then we'll be bringing that forward to.
Yeah, no, I knew that. I thought, before we decided to go to the underwriters again, this was tender documents were prepared to go out. But anyway, you're saying it was like 99% complete, you're still with more work?
Correct, and we never had tender documents put together.
Okay.
No, we didn't have tender documents, but I was at the meeting on the 11th hour when we were told that this was probably not the right site, and then we stopped the project. So I'm just like Counsel Bernard, design build would mean that we're ready to go. Design bill is that you set up the tender to go out, and you're expanding, you're looking at 132,000. So if you don't have a site, then how can we look at a design build?
Your worship, that money, the 132 is the carryover from the original design and build, capital money awarded or approved by council. It's 99% complete with the design. When we get the results from fire underwriters, the actual design of the building, aside from some topography, obviously, is going to be applicable to any site that may be determined by the underwriter. So that's one thing that we've mentioned when we halted the project, is that the design is not a waste. It's a design for a specific square footage of a fire station, and it'll fit on the lot that we approve or choose. So there's been no loss of funds in that regard, and the carryover is just to, when the location is determined, and if this station design works, the next finish is to finish off the design and go to tender, which is the rest of that money.
So that's, so it's a carryover from last year?
Yep.
That's why Hertz Hall should be a carryover, too. It was in the budget. But anyway, my other question was your fast response craft, and I think Counselor McTard asked, that's a Coast Guard responsibility, right? And I'm just wondering, have we had conversations with the federal government about cost sharing? Because I know we're quicker to get added if something happens, especially in Hillsborough River, and I think that's why we were looking at this before. But I also thought there was talk in the federal government was going to cost share at 50%.
Counsel Bernard, not that I'm aware of for the actual purchase of the vessel. We do combine some services with Coast Guard. They have some inshore rescue during the summer months, but during the winter months, there's really no response in the harbor, aside from our, being able to launch our craft. But we do work closely with all components down on the water. RCMP have a boat as well, but it's a big island, and they could be anywhere on it. So when there is something in the harbor, or the mouth of the harbor, or as we've done in the past, rescue people from a sinking vessel out at the entrance, that's what our purpose is. But we continue to work with our funding partners to see if there is something there that they can work with us and help with that purchase.
Yeah, I don't disagree with having the fast response, and I know they can get there quick.
You're off.
It's federal government responsibility, so they should be coming to the table with some money. We're doing them a favor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel McCabe.
Actually, that was exactly my line of questioning. I do believe that we did have discussion that there was going to be some exploratory work, knowing that we do, you know, it is, makes sense for lifesaving rescue that we're the first in the water, but it is not, it is a federal responsibility for that waterway and to look to see if there would be some partner funding. And I was under the impression that that's why we were kind of deferring, and it was going to take a while to make it, but they were also going to do some exploring. So I was just looking for an update, too, to see if, if anything was done with that as far as partnering with our federal partners.
So do we want to perk it, to wait until we find this federal funding?
Well, I think it's a need. I don't know if we can perk it, but I really think we need to continue to explore.
We can go back to it.
Whatever people want.
We continue to explore. I have been since that time. It is something that would be new for the city, as we haven't had an arrangement in the past that I've been able to suss out. So we're working forward with that, and we continue to talk with the partners, but it is a new ask or a new initiative, so we have to work that through, and that continues. And if there is any partner funding to come forward, that'll obviously drop the capital commitment from the city. But keeping the money there and moving it forward is a necessity from, based from the operational standpoint of the department, to make sure we can maintain our current level of response and rescue safety capabilities.
Counsel McCabe.
Sorry, and just to follow up to that, Chief, thank you. And this has been a carryover for a couple of years, right? Is this craft ready to buy? Or are we still having to put an order in for it, or?
It's, we're going to be, going to tender early in the new fiscal year, and then we'll be going out for, obviously, the purchase after that. The original design of the craft, which is what the, the cost of the money is, when it was looked at closer by the department management team, it was determined it was more than likely not a suitable craft for the type of waters we deal in. There's, there's lake craft, and there's also open water craft, and we respond to both types of environments. So that's why there was a relook at that. We regathered all the information and all the necessities that we required of the vessel, put it all together, and we're ready to go to, to tender early in the capital budget year if we're yet approved for this.
Counsel Bernard.
Is this a replacement, or is this our?
It's a replacement.
Okay. So you want to leave as is? That's what I'm sensing?
I think the conversation has to be had. I know, I know the federal government were prepared to put in money before. Pretty expensive craft, 425. I, I think we need it. I think what the chief's saying, you know, I agree with him. But I also think the federal government have a responsibility to either pay for it or at least come in 50%. Because it's, it's, I mean, it's a safety issue, but it's also a Coast Guard responsibility. So what we're saying here is, you know, we want to respond as quick as we can, we want to help them. But I do think that they need to come to board, and they, and they were prepared before.
So just, your worship, Counsel Bernard, maybe you can forward some of that information on, because I have no point of reference for that, but if there was something in the past, I can definitely follow up if there's a lead in that regard, and we'll continue with that line of pursuit.
So Halifax Fire in Halifax, they have similar equipment for?
Their vessels are much larger and much more expensive than.
But operated and maintained by the fire department.
Correct.
Okay. To the next parts, City Hall electric upgrades.
Yes, the remainder of the capital budget under emergency measures operations is the request for the dollar values indicated for upgrades and internal work for some of the buildings as we move towards getting these secondary generation, generators in place. So those are the totals that are expected to be able to be tendered, spent, and completed this year.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. And we know that this is an area that we certainly can't ignore and have to put some efforts in. I'm just curious why on line 20, where EMO has a generator for Sherwood Hall, Sherwood Hall would be considered one of our buildings, right? We just approved two generators under Public Works for warming centers and stuff. Why is this generator approved in EMO budget to came through capital, or from Public Works' budget? I'm just pointing out that maybe we need to do a better job organizing where these line budgets are all coming through.
Yes, Counsel McCabe, through your worship, these are coordinated numbers, and I've met with both Richard McEwen from Water Utilities, Paul Johnson, Assets Management, and Scott Adams from Public Works, so that we coordinate it and determine exactly what's going on with all these buildings and the generators. So it is coordinated.
Just one sec.
This was more for, I think, maybe senior management knowing where to budget line some of these, because Public Works indicated that they came to us with the generators and the partner funding and stuff, because it is city buildings. Well, Sherwood Hall would be considered a city building, so I'm just thinking it should be grouped together. That's just more of a suggestion moving forward, not anything about getting it. We're glad to see the more generators that we can get and paid for, the better, but it's more for bookkeeping.
Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, and on that same theme, I thought, I'm wondering why there wouldn't be partner funding for these two generators as there was for the other two in Public Works?
Could I also ask a question there, Mayor Brown? I don't know if you can see my hand raised.
No, no, I, again, I can't, but maybe Tracy, can, Chief's just going to answer this question, and he'll take your question, Counsel Dron.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Your worship, just got turned around a little bit there. Can I have the question again, please?
Yeah, the, so the two generators we have for West Royalty and Hillsborough Park are being cost shared, I believe it's a COA. And I'm just wondering what?
Not being cost shared, funded.
Whatever. I'm just wondering if these can be cost shared also through a COA?
In coordination with Public Works and Assets Management, as I mentioned, we've been looking at those options. The COA funding, that is something in Public Works' hands. We haven't looked at that. There's also a resiliency fund through the province that made, that was made some money available to some units as well, and we've been working along with those community partners as well. But we can follow up with, I'll follow up with Scott Adams, take that as advisement and follow up with him on those requests.
Counsel Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And I was waiting till the chief got down to the generator Sherwood Hall. I think it was last year in the capital budget, we did put in four or five generators. We've been working on this for, I'd say, four years now, to try to get a generator for an emergency warming center at the Sherwood Hall. We did put this in the budget. We were told that these generators were ordered and that they would take a year to get in because, due to the supply and demand. So I, I sent you an email yesterday, Chief, asking the status of it, because I've seen it in the, in their budget presentations here. So I can't understand, like, if we get a $90 million budget last year, we only spent 40 million, and then all of a sudden, some of these projects are back on the agenda for tonight. I just can't understand it. Like, when Counsel Bernard said Hertz Hall, there was the disability ramp at Sherwood Hall, also was in the budget last year, and these projects aren't done. So I can't understand, or I would like to get a spreadsheet of what we spent last year, what we approved, and why wasn't it finished?
What's in the budget last year?
What wasn't in the budget?
Those items you're talking about.
Yeah, we, we ordered four or five, Nelson, it was the year before. We ordered four or five generators.
Station one, and station two, and the police station, with the three in the budget.
For last year, '23, '24?
Yep, that's the budget I have.
Three years ago, I do recall that we had taken, we were going to purchase a.
Sherwood Hall was in it.
Yeah, Bobby's correct.
Okay.
So I don't know if it was in that budget or the operational budget, but it was shocking at the time because it was going to take a year to get these generators in. And now I see them back on the docket here for this year, so.
Yeah.
That, that's why I can't understand. If we, if we, if we approve a budget, a capital budget, and we only spend half of it, and then we're going back out this year for another 55, and we don't spend it, like, it's kind of a waste of time. Can we, can we get a spreadsheet of what we spent, what we approved, and what we're not doing again?
Yeah. Counsel Dron, you know that Public Works put out their spreadsheet every month for capital projects they're doing? Are you asking the same for fire and EMO?
Yeah, well, for, for everything, Mayor Brown. Like, it just seems that, you know, it's congratulations, we're, we're doing a huge amount of work this year, and, and we're all ready for projects, and then we do half of them, and then some, like Hertz Hall or Sherwood Hall or whatever, they, they don't get fulfilled. And now we're, we're looking for new projects when we didn't finish the last year's projects. You know, I just, it just doesn't make sense to me. If this was approved last year, or whatever projects, why aren't we completing them?
If I might, your worship. Thank you, Counsel Dron, for the question, and through your worship, I'll try, attempt to answer. I think you've exactly made the case that staff has been trying to make the last couple of evenings here as we go through this. We have had approval in the past for capital projects, but in learning exactly what it takes to get some of those through to the finish line, we've determined that there's some things we just can't do on that annual basis. The generators were approved three years ago. They went to tender, were awarded, and the company that won the, or won the competition, pulled out of the competition, and weren't able to complete it. So everything had to come to a stop. These are not off-the-shelf items, as you can imagine, 80 kilowatt generators, 125 kilowatt generators. That type of thing is not something you can, you can roll into the Home Depot or anything like that to pick up. So these are large items that take a long time to both manufacture, ship, and install. So that was the initial holdup, was finding somebody who could do the work. There was a tender awarded. The tender fell apart with the, the winning business pulling out, and we're back to this position. And what we're saying is, instead of asking for all of those hundreds of thousands of dollars again this year for those generators to carry over, just the money that we're asking for, the 75, the 25, the 95, because we think that is practical and we're able to spend that this year and not tie up a bunch of capital that doesn't get activated or doesn't get used. So that is where we're at with that, and those numbers now are not new money, or they are new money, but they're not new projects. They're to continue with these projects as we re-go to tender and gets the, and get some new providers involved.
So Counsel Dron, I can't see you, so do you want to follow up?
Yes, and thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you very much, Chief, for that explanation. You know, when, when I tell people when this was approved, that the warming center is coming, we're going to get a generator, and I still, to this day, say, well, it should be in soon. I didn't know that it wasn't coming. You know, so I guess, you know, that's why I'm saying, if we approve certain projects or approve a capital budget, that it should trickle down to us that say, you know what, this tender fell apart, you know, we didn't complete that this year, maybe it's a year-end thing, that we should be informed, because I, I've told many people that, you know, hold on, this year, if there's an emergency, we're going to have a generator in place, it's going to be a warming center for the community. So, you know, I guess it's just a communication piece that we, we have to do better, but thank you for your explanation, and, you know, I just, hopefully we get this stuff approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McCabe.
I know what, I just want to follow up, because we did talk at Public Works, too, once we've sent the new generators for Hillsborough Hall and West Royalty, that they talked about the movable generator, I believe it was in Hillsborough Park that they used during Fiona. And the talk at that time was that they would take that generator and move it over to the Maplewood Room at Sherwood Hall to accomplish, and we had suggested at that point it would come back to your team with EMO. So I think that's, Mayor, if you recall, you recited some sustainability thing that you wanted us to look at at Public Works, and we suggested that go to EMO as well. So it was all around the generator and the movable generator. So there should be one already available that's coming out of Hillsborough Hall that can be accessed, accessed, excuse me, for Sherwood.
Yeah, I just sent that email to the chief, Renewable Energy Solutions, about green energy backup generators. Counsel Bernard, no, sorry, I had Counsel back there. You want to go, Counsel Bernard? Okay. Okay, go ahead. Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, I just want to say, I do agree with Counsel Dron, and I think when, when, that's why I had an issue with Hertz Hall. I think when a budget's approved, and people are asking, and you tell them that, or you put out information, let them know this is getting done, and it's not done, and I could see following behind, or I could see not getting done that year, but you would think that once it's approved, that's the top of the next year to get done. So it is unfortunate that it was in the budget three years ago and it's still not done, that, you know, that's something that should be looked at. I do think that with all elected officials, when we go through the budget process and we, we recognize the needs and we approve those needs, and it doesn't get done, they have to start the cycle all over again, and it's not right. It should be when it's approved, it's approved to be done. And if it doesn't get done that fiscal year, as the chief said, he moved the 132 over for this year, excuse me, for the design bill. So anything that's approved in the capital budget should get done. We shouldn't have to go all over, go through it again.
Thank you. Counsel back.
Yeah, and I think from my understanding about this all is that we are in a bit of, I think we have to be reminded we are in a bit of period of transition. That's been articulated right from the start of this process, that we are looking to do some different things. I think, kind of just speaking to what Counsel Dron was, was asking for, that kind of tracking mechanism, or whatever it is that we're looking for, Danny has templated in place that as we go forward, we'll be able to see those, we'll be able to see how much to. we go forward, we'll be able to see those, we'll be able to see how much did we, what was the original cost of the project? How much did we get done in this year? What's going to be carried forward into the following year? And he gave, I think it was Simmons you used as an example, wasn't it, Danny, at that meeting?
Simmons.
Yeah, so, you know, I think what we're trying to do is to get through, I think we're in that transitory stage where we're trying to sort out what was actually carried over, what is actually feasible to do this year, and kind of what Danny has been saying since start, what can we conceivably do in this given year? And I think that's what this exercise is trying to get at here tonight. So, you know, I can think we can talk about, well, gee, I wish it had gotten spent, you know, I think we would all love to be able to say, if a project gets discussed, is merit to go forward? We would like to do that. But in this period of transition and trying to move forward and trying to get going, I think we have to kind of just acknowledge that again and kind of recognize that that's where we are, rightly or wrongly. That's the situation that we're in, so.
Thank you.
Anyway, let's keep, see if we can keep going.
Okay. CEO?
Thank you, your worship. So I think, you know, expanding on that, your budget process is a process of prioritization. And every time you come back to your process, your budget process every year, we're asking you, is this still a priority? Because if it's still a priority and you're trying to add 10 more things, then it's not as much of a priority anymore. So that's what this conversation has to be. We cannot do everything. You'll find when you ask these questions of why wasn't this done last year, it'll fall into pretty much four categories. You'll get the same answer, different ways, but four categories. One, we didn't have the workforce capacity to get it done. Two, we couldn't get a contractor in place. Three, we couldn't get the materials. Or four, the timing of our tendering or RFP process was off, and we couldn't deliver within the budget timeline. Those are going to be the four category of responses that you will almost get from every staff member. It will just be stated in a different way. So when we have budgets that are trending millions of dollars more in capital than we're delivering, it's an indicator that we have to be stronger about what we're prioritizing. And the CFO throughout the year will be able to provide quarterly reports financially to show where things are at. Another tool that's going to help prioritize things throughout the year for workforce is the corporate plan, when that gets developed as well, because you'll be able to see, translated from budget, what those priorities are and when, as a workforce, we can get those done. So those are important tools that, right now, we haven't been using and they're not in place. So we have a whole bunch of things that have been thrown at us, but we're trying to sort through what is priority. And that's really what this budget process is for. So when I hear the conversation about 90 million capital versus 45 million capital, the dollars are important, they sure are. But in my mind, I would not, rather not overpromise and underdeliver. I would rather be more realistic in terms of what we can achieve in a year, so we're not back here a year from now saying, I'm sorry I couldn't get this done for one of these four reasons.
Thank you, Eleanor, but I can tell you that some of the councils that have been around here for some time, we've heard that before about labor, supply, but the last one you said is about the tendering process, or getting this budget out early. Next year, capital have to go first so we can get these tenders out quicker. Counsel Twill?
As I did in Public Works. It's great to see where we have some parts of the city where we have warming centers, we have generators, and yet other parts of the city, there's a complete total disparity. And the heart of the city has no warming centers. That's where there's a lot of high density. Senior citizens, people don't have access to transportation, and we're not making any inroads there. We're not making any inroads. You know, I think in terms of long-term plannings, we need to build some community halls, whether it be, you know, in the Parkdale Park, or in the heart of the city, or even out in the Brighton area. But I can think of three or four different communities where there are no facilities, and it's totally unfair. And, you know, in terms of being proactive, it's great that we're talking generators, I'm all for it. We have sections of our city that has no venues or facilities that are going to be able to accommodate our residents, and I'll talk about it, seniors, whenever we get into situations and events like Fiona. So I know nothing's here in the budget, but we got to start, we got to start planning, and we got to start looking at where we need to make inroads in those facilities so we can install generators. Right? These are major disparities where I haven't seen any blueprints, or any suggestions, or any ideas on how we move forward. So I'm not going to let that go, folks. Thank you.
If I might respond, just your worship, just so I can inform, and Counsel Twill, thank you very much. Just with that, there may not be city-owned facilities in the areas, but with our community partners and working with, through the Emergency Measures Organization, I'm actually meeting with two groups of them next week. We have many care centers, emergency lodging facilities, and reception centers that are populated all over the island, or, sorry, all over the city. And what I can do is put together a map with some GIS positioning of all of our community partners and the facilities they can provide, and the resources we can provide to them so that we can look after our population in every area of the city. We don't just look at them as wards, we look, obviously, where the emergency is, what's needed in that location, and how we can provide it. So with our community partners.
Just one second, Counsel. Deputy Mary Yankoff, thank you.
Yeah, and thank you for that, Chief. And I know that the downtown, we don't necessarily have city-owned spaces, but we have the Confederation Center that hosted as a reception center during Fiona, and I think 17,000 people were looked out for.
Yeah.
And also the Murphy Center, so just building on those community partners, just as an aside.
And they had their own emergency generator backup system. And I believe, Deputy, because you sit on the board of governors, you reached out to Steve, Steve actually reached back to us, that his facility is open. And we were down there, we didn't beat Julie's Cafe, but I know with what you were doing and everybody else, was phenomenal. So that's a major facility, and I think that's what you were talking about. Kirk of St. James, the reverend over there, she's open to work with us. So is the Holy Redeemer through Jack Blanchard Hall. And could you please put that list together so that we can get funding assistance from that emergency generator backup program through, I think, EMO Prince Edward Island?
Yes, the Provincial Resiliency Fund. Yes, your worship, I'll put that list together, and once again, it'll be all indicated as well on mapping of the city so that we can actually see spread throughout exactly what we have at our disposal when the chips are down and we have our community partner step up to help as well.
Counsel Bernard and Counsel Twill.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to go back to what Eleanor was saying about the budget and the categories, and I guess I'm a little different than that because we're going to start doing budgets that people still aren't going to be sure if their project's going to get done or not if we get down that road. I mean, '21, '22, '22, '23, '21, it was COVID was a lot of the reason why a lot of the projects never got done. COVID slowed everything right down, so a lot of the projects that we had anticipated to do, so in '21, '22, it was a $50,000 budget, only 18 million of work, none. Then the next two years, it was 60, what is it, 64 million, 40 million got done, 65, 32 got done. Those, we're into supply chain issues right now that we're trying to come out of. So I guess where I'm looking at is if 64 million was what the finance department came back, said the city could afford with their revenues and expenditures. We haven't been spending that. We haven't been able to finish the projects. As opposed to what Eleanor said, was overpromise and underachieve, I don't think we should be underachieving at all. I think those projects that never got done are the ones that are on the list for the next year, unless something changes, that needs to be a conversation with council. But I would think if they're approved, they're approved as a priority project. So, and that's why I think, you know, that's some of the questions I have right now, once we get into the revenue and the operation, that we'll get a better idea of where that, because like I said earlier, our revenue is up from last year. So it's nice to know why everything's being cut back so much. But anyway, to me, I'm very much that if a project's approved, your residents think it's going to happen, and then it doesn't happen, and then it's a discussion again the following year. I don't think that's right. And I think by looking at what Counsel Dron said, he was expecting it three years ago. Should have had it.
But the chief explained what happened.
No, no, that's a one-off. I can understand that.
At least there's more than one-off, there's a few of them like that.
But Hertz Hall is not, it's not a one-off. It's been approved, it was in the budget, it's ready to go to tender. And I think it did actually go to tender. So.
Okay.
Anyway, I do think that, like you say, if a project gets approved, if it's not done in one year, it carries over to the next year because the budget was already approved for it. Anyway, thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Yeah, Chief, it's great that you're going to map out potential facilities. I know that the reference made here, some of these community facilities, I can recall during Fiona, when we had electricity that was out for 14 and 17 days, I tried to correspond with senior management to try to get access to these facilities, to no avail. So what I'm looking for is, and what the community's looking for is predictability, looking forward to consistency, so that, you know, if we were to have a major event in our city, it's not, well, we couldn't get it, we tried to, but we couldn't get access to it. That's what I felt happened the last time, and we had a lot of people that were left stranded. So I'm looking forward to, you know, what you're proposing, and I'd even like to showcase that to the community, once we have a look at, because I'll reiterate, there has to be predictability, and there has to be consistency, because a lot of our residents during Fiona were left stranded. Thank you.
Chief, I did send you that email from Sesame Solar NanoGrid, and it's a 100% renewable power solution that utilizes green hydrogen, solar, and batteries to generate power. Just something to look forward, because it's all geared towards race to zero by 2040 with our Climate Action Plan. Thank you. Are we all right with that, then? What's there? Okay. Okay, next one. Thank you, Chief, thank you very much. Okay. Chief, please. Brad McConnell. How you doing, Chief? A little better today?
I'm coming along, your worship, thank you.
You need some water?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, sir. Best water in Atlantic Canada.
So Richard McKeown tells us, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. As you can probably see on your screen, we have a number of capital items before you for your consideration. I'll just go down the list. The first is $100,000 for PICX-2 radio system, or in addition to our current system, we need additional radios and replacement of ones that are become unoperable. $22,000 for additional ballistic equipment. $8,954 for continual sidearm replacement. $6,000 for a couple additional LiDAR speed units. $5,000 for surveillance equipment. $10,000 for carbine noise suppressors. $12,700 for carbine vehicle mounts. $49,000 for eWatch equipment. $20,000 for digital forensic equipment and licensing. $50,000 for small equipment and less lethal weapon systems, which would include things like tasers. $200,000 for Critical Incident Command, which largely consists of replacement of our command post that was decommissioned last year. There's a need for us to build capacity in the area of Critical Incident Command, not only in response to incidents that occur in our city, but obviously, the due diligence that has to be done each and every year as regarding training. So we need, we certainly need to build and invest there. $80,000 for tactical team equipment, which consists of investment in night vision optics. And the last line item is some partner funding for guns and gangs, $10,952, which is fully funded for things such as, can range from weapons locking systems to license plate recognition equipment. And I'm happy to answer any questions from council.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. More clarification for me, Chief. Thank you for your presentation there. The tactical team, the Critical Incident Command team, is that just for Charlestown, or is that, do we service outside of Charlestown with that? Is that just for, within the city, those two teams? Or do we partner with, like, the RCMP, or, like, are we big enough for our own Command, Critical Incident Command team as a city?
Yeah, we certainly are. Up until 2018, we partnered with the RCMP in a joint forces operation. In 2018, the RCMP took a different direction and moved their resources off-island. Since that time, there's certainly been an onus on us to have a tactical response, especially in the capital city, and to continue to build capacity. I think if you look at recommendations from the Mass Casualty Commission, they will specify those exact things. There's an onus on all of us to have a mindset to support our community, both tactically and in preparedness in the event of, you know, incidents that can certainly capture the public's intentions, but also undermine public confidence and, as a result of a single incident.
Counsel McCabe, follow up?
Yeah, just to follow up to that, thank you. So with the equipment and stuff, and the instant command, that 200,000, is that kind of it for the year? Do these require specific training? Is that extra over and above what we're seeing here?
Well, that's for equipment. Our units train monthly, and that's built into our operational budget. This is a largely, this money, the 200,000, is for investment in a command post that can be outfitted certainly to hose, to house our crisis negotiators, our incident commanders, our tactical team leaders, and also can certainly be used as a community policing trailer also in times of, when we're policing major events that are occurring in our city. So, you know, it can serve on a lot of fronts, but there's certainly a need for us to be able to have a resource like that to house those very important entities within our critical incident response mechanism.
Okay. Counsel Pritchard.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Chief, for your presentation on your budget. The eWatch equipment, your 49,000, how many units is that netting for 49,000?
That's about seven installations.
Seven?
Yeah.
So that's just installation? How's that, the purchase of them as well?
Well, when I say installation, that's the purchase, and so seven installations of a camera.
So you're budgeting over five years, so we're looking at about 35 units possibly. Does that mean that we're moving away from partnering with communities and trying to, you know, there's been some situations where we've asked for funding to put these across the city? Is that an indication that that's what we're doing? Or is the city going to be spreading these out a little bit more in strategic areas across the entire city? I mean, 35, we have a number that are already deployed right now. With, you know, over the next five years, we could have upwards of 35 or 40 new units.
Yes, it's a combination. It's certainly a shared responsibility. It's not moving away from our model, our model's very successful, but it's also showing our city's commitment that we also believe in investing in the program that we're asking others to invest in. And so, and there are incidents, or areas across the city, where we could use installations that would not necessarily have a partner to sponsor. So it's really a continuation of something very special we've built here in Charlestown that's catching on in other areas. But it's like every, everything, it needs a certain amount of investment each year to keep it growing and also to respond to the community cry when there are times that... are times that the presence of an E-Watch installation will improve community safety or community confidence, or lower the, the temperature. We need the ability to try to do that.
Mr. Beck.
Yeah, just a quick question, Chief. Kind of going back to my former life as a school principal, we always had school safe plans. We have a high concentration of schools here in the Charlestown area. And those critical incident commands would be put in place to support the safe plans that schools have, operational plans that they have. That would be an example of something where that critical incident would be used to support any or all of the schools, because we have a multitude of schools here in the Charlestown area. That would be something that would be supporting them directly?
That's an example.
Your Worship, Council Beck, yeah, you're exactly right. It's, you know, we, we have these safe plans, and not just with our schools, but with other, other partners. And, and this critical instance response capacity gives ability to, to practice that, bring our resources together. We did that very thing in June of last year at Charlestown Row. We had a major, major exercise, bringing all our units together, and certainly not having the ability to have a command post on site to manage that was certainly made, you know, took away from the experience that, you know, that's very valuable. And I think everyone, you know, that's been part of a safe school exercise or a critical incident response, understands the value of having a, a command post and the ability to have decision makers, but also resources, communication systems, databases in a central place to, to, you know, promote better outcomes in those situations. This will also give us an ability to have a redundancy for emergency dispatch, or dispatch, dispatches both for police and fire. And right now, we don't have a, we don't have an off-site location to do that. So with, with this command post, building some infrastructure and some systems within that gives us another option in the event of some sort of incident, which we've had in the police department before, where, where we had to vacate our emergency dispatch. This would give us an option and redundancy.
Thank you. Council Twill.
Thank you, Chief. Couple of questions. So I see in the photo, red light enforcement equipment, no dollars or earmarked for this year. I've read in the newspaper, you referenced the traffic, traffic radar, and so no, still no, no compliance from the, from the province? Is that correct?
Yeah, there's certainly a level of uncertainty there, certainly when we're looking at our budgets and where areas we could, we could potentially cut. We focus on ones that were within our control, and we haven't got a great deal of, of, certainly from the province, whether we're going to finish the regulations, whether we're going to be able to move forward with this next year or not. So we certainly park that to next year. Something we, we, we believe in. I think we've heard it from residents that there's, that there's a desire to utilize this technology within our jurisdiction, and certainly we're going to keep it on the horizon when the stars do align for allow us to use it.
Well, you know, this, remember attending an FCM conference back, oh, would have been three or four years ago, and the emphasis and the, the logic for traffic radar was to designate the school zones in around playgrounds, sports fields, and neighborhoods where traffic is, is using these particular neighborhoods as, as a shortcut. And, you know, I just think of some of the streets, like, well, you know them, Spring Park Road, Queen Street, Upper Prince Street, Waltham Drive, Gerald. It's just continuous. Besides the spreading traffic, these are, these are school zones. And it's not just during the, you know, the daylight time, but in the evenings, a lot of these schools are, are being utilized for, for community activities. And, you know, it's too bad we're not moving forward on that.
Waiting for the province.
I want to ask you some questions about the E-Watch equipment. $49,000 earmarked for this year. It's hard to get a handle on, on how much money the city of Charlestown is spending on E-Watch equipment. For example, you've got some of it. Parks and Recreation has some of it. City's facing a lot of challenges now, particularly with the safety and security of the neighborhoods and the increased amount of activities, illegal activities that are taking place in these neighborhoods and communities. And, for example, if you look at the E-Watch cameras that are installed down at the parking lot for the Civic Center, the city's own parking lot, I guess the question I have is, I saw all those cameras there. Who paid for those cameras?
Which one?
One downstairs in the parking lot. The city-owned parking lot.
That's, Your Worship, Council Twill, are you talking about the ones, Jason Park Street?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, the province paid for those as part of the Safe Spaces Initiative. They, they invested, I believe, $56,000 for, for E-Watch equipment in that area.
Yeah, and Red Chores had 30 cameras, too. They put up 30 cameras.
So, so, so those, those are paid for completely and totally by the province PEI?
That's correct.
Okay. And on the guns and gangs, I, I look at the line item, you know, 10,000, 11, 11,000, and then funding partner, that would be the feds, correct?
That is correct.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but that doesn't appear to be a lot of money. I mean, those are two pretty, you know, $20,000 between the municipality and the federal government. Doesn't seem to be a lot of money. That's earmarked for guns and gangs, and, and, you know, you know, I hear, and I'm sure you know more about it than I do, but I mean, people walking around in this city with knives and machetes and all these, you know, all these.
Council Twill, let's stay with the budget.
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
No, come on.
You know what? I'm trying to ask the chief some questions, and these are legitimate questions. It's earmarked here, and you're interfering again. And I want you to stop it.
Stay focused on the budget.
I am focused, and I want you to stop it, Mr. Mayor.
No, I want you to stop it.
Stop it!
Stop it!
I'm leaving if this is going to continue.
Chief, can you answer?
Yes, Your Worship, Council Twill. Yeah, you know what? The guns and gangs money has been very beneficial. The bulk of it, though, is in the operational side for funding of positions. This is just physical, tangible, capital-related items. So it does benefit us in the form of funding positions, and it's not, you know, it's certainly not that obvious from our capital side, but on the operational side it is.
Okay, Chief. And again, I go back to the respect in this chamber. We have to keep our questions on the budget, and if we go off budget, then I will be asking to go back on course. Respect is first and foremost in this chamber. Chief, just looking at last year's budget, you had $221,000. This year, it's 574, mostly focused on ballistic equipment, critical incidents, so forth. Is that the focus for this year?
Yeah, Your Worship, $100,000 of that is for additional radios to accommodate the additional staff, but also replacement of additional radios. And then $200,000 of that is, is for the critical guns and command. So, yeah, there's a focus on, on those.
Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to say, on the E-Watch, the cameras, and I'd be in full support of that. And interesting enough, the story, if it wasn't in today's paper, it was yesterday's, a 911 call come in for a drunk driver. E-Watch was able to trace that car for the police to catch up on it, and the person was three times over the limit. So they work. Thank you.
Okay. Environment Sustainability? Want to move on?
Agreed.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Jessica. Thank you, Chief. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council. So as requested, I'll just look at the items that are above $250,000. So that would be the lower section, which is specific to public transit. A lot of these are items you've seen before you and are multi-year projects, so a lot of it shouldn't be new to you. So the first item there is for diesel buses. Those have been tendered, awarded, and are currently under construction. They will be delivered and invoiced in the fall, so that's why it's moved forward to this year, or to the next fiscal year. The 2.57 million for the transit facility, that's about a quarter of the cost of that project that we anticipate will be spent in the next fiscal year towards that building. The next two items are pieces of the building, so the battery storage system and the electric vehicle charging for the buses is part of the building development. And then the last line item for 382,000 is infrastructure for transit, including transit shelters, concrete pads, and fare boxes for our new buses. And that's it. Thank you.
Questions? Council Beck.
Yeah, I just had a question about, can you repeat the infrastructure, what those for? I was just looking for a little clarification on that. I think you said.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you just repeat those again for me?
Yes, sure. Through the chair, so that would be bus shelters, concrete pads for shelters, and improved accessibility at our stops, and fare boxes for the new buses. So that's when you get on the bus and put your money in, it automatically counts people, and the driver doesn't have to manually count people and make change and things like that.
Okay. Council Twill.
Couple of questions for you. There's no money earmarked for, for benches for shelters this year, right?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So there's not specifically money for benches in there, but infrastructure could be considered benches. So depending on how much the shelters and the pads come in, if there's money left over, we could put it towards benches.
Well, I'll just reiterate what I tried the last couple of years. We have residents in our, our city that are requesting shelters. A lot of them have disabilities, find it hard, and need a place to go into these shelters, so, especially when it's a windy day, have a place to sit down. So, you know, I'm kind of disappointed there's no money earmarked for shelters. And then the, yeah, if you could address that, please.
Yeah, no problem. Through you, Mr. Chair. We can look at a way that we can find benches for the shelters, I'm sure, within that budget.
Okay, great. I'll be back to you on that one. On the bypass, multi-use pathway extension, how much more do we have to go?
The AT path around the perimeter of the highway?
Right.
So we've completed everything that we planned to date. So we've connected to Stratford, to Cornwall, to the airport, to the Confederation Trail. So our next AT plan is to develop a new, a new plan, because we basically completed all the sections that we've outlined as priorities.
I might suggest that, you know, it's great that we're doing the periphery of the city, and I support that, but I think we need to get into the high-density areas where we don't have those facilities. And traffic, vehicle traffic is a major challenge. There's more traffic in, in the heart of the city, in the downtown. Traffic is, is fast and furious, and a lot of our residents don't feel safe, that would like to go out for a bike ride, or be, like to go out for a walk, or jog, or whatever the case may be. So I think we need to make some major inroads in the heart of the city, so, so we can encourage people to go out and, and, you know, so our city is truly livable, and, and they can go out, whether it's passive recreation or active recreation, to be able to feel safe with these particular venues. So just wanted to bring that to your attention, hoping that we can make some inroads.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I think we totally agree with that statement, and we consider the Confed Trail and the outside of the city kind of like the spines, and now we need to make other connections, the ribs throughout the city, and that's, the plan will outline where we go next.
Council Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. $5.9 million. 4.3 of that is investing candidate infrastructure program money. So it's, it's 1.6 million of city dollars. And I think, as Jessica said, it's under infrastructure, the 382. 62 of that's partner funding, but if shelters were needed, I'm sure there's money that can be found there.
Council Beck, clear.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Just to, on the shelter piece, can you give an indication of, is there a vision, a goal to have so many new shelters installed this year? Is there, is there a number you have in mind? And just on that, how many shelters do we have now, and how many are expected to be added this year? I guess if, if you could share that. Thank you.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. So we currently have 45 shelters spread throughout the city. And we're just wrapping up the final piece of our public transit strategic plan, and we've asked them to give us a screening criteria for how we decide where the shelters go. So what's ridership like at that location, and what would trigger the need for a shelter? So once that plan's finalized, we're going to go through a review of the city and decide what places are the most rider, are we seeing the most ridership where there isn't a place for people to stand out of the shelter. So we don't know the exact locations yet, but we're going to work on that after the plan's done.
Council Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Jess, for this. It's a great breakdown. Under revenue, like, we're purchasing the shelters, as two or three councillors brought up and everything, that we, we're in charge of it. The revenue for the advertisement on the shelters, where does that go? Does that go back to the city, or, or to the T3, or Cornwall, Stratford, and Charlestown? Or does that go separate? Thank you.
Through the chair. So in our agreement with our operator, all marketing on buses and shelters is managed and revenue for our operator.
Including fares.
And in addition to fares, correct.
Yeah.
So, Jessica, 25, 26, 7.6 million, is that what it's going up to? Is that minus partner sharing, or what's?
Sorry, can you tell me what you're referring to?
I'm looking at 25, 26.
Oh, okay.
You're looking ahead next year?
Correct.
7.6 million?
That's in, that's, I believe Betty subtracted the partner funding that was net, correct?
That's, okay, so we're going from 1.7 to 7.7. 600% increase. It's a big budget ticket.
25, 26 is 6.6.
Yeah, but I'm saying next year's capital for environment sustainability will be 600% higher.
Are you taking off the partner funding?
She said, she, I asked, but the 7.6, is that net partner funding, Dan? Is that net partner funding? Okay.
No.
Okay. Council Bernard.
Well, the purchase of buses is 5.194 million.
Yeah, that's the one I wanted to double check.
You're getting, you're getting partner funding for that.
Yeah. But if you go down to the net, at the bottom, when you go total environment transit, it says 7.6. Do you see that? Is that, Dan, is that what we will be budgeting next year?
Your Worship, it looks as though it does not include the partner funding, so we'll make that correct.
What's that?
It looks as though there, that it does not include the partner funding.
Oh, so that 7.6 does include it?
I think if you go to the end, you'll see 25, 26 is net of 6.8 million partner funding. So you have to take that off.
If, I'm looking at the project sheet here, which is on the screen now, 25, 26 new buses, diesel and electric, 8.47 million. The partner funding is identified in that same timeframe as 17. Jessica, do you?
Yeah, if I can jump in. So the, the top table is total cost of the project.
Yeah.
And the lower table is the partner funding that would be taken off of those upper numbers.
Okay, so 25, 26, it's not 7.6. No, there's.
No, I don't believe that's accurate. No, I don't believe that's accurate.
Okay. If we can get that accurate, that'd be great.
We'll clear that up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's why I was asking if it was net partner.
I know it's not, but anyway.
Well, that should be there if we're going to be looking at it for future years. Okay.
Okay.
Everything else okay?
Yep.
Okay. Information technology. I think we have Rory.
Okay, so yeah, IT doesn't have any major projects. It's over 250,000, but I'll just quickly go through the list of projects that we do have. So we have 160,000 for laptops, desktops, monitors, $100,000 for a learn server for police services, 15,000 for rugged devices. Those are for tablets for police cars, new vehicles, $90,000 for Parkdale streaming technology. That's to do committee meetings in the Parkdale Room. $50,000 for fiber network hardware. That's to hook up to the utility fiber network. $40,000 for city network modernization. $90,000 for a fire inspection records database migration. $40,000 for network hardware, which is to connect Maclear Drive to Brackley. $20,000 for a police forensic server. And then there's also a $40,000 contingency fund. That's in the event that we have servers that fail and need to be replaced urgently.
Counsel Peck.
Yeah, thanks for that, Rory. I'm just wondering about the Parkdale streaming. Currently, we conduct our committee meetings in here. I guess I question, why would we invest 90,000 to move meetings next door? Seems we've got the infrastructure in here already, plenty of room to sit around. So I don't know. I'm just, I don't know whether it's something that we need. Maybe if you could elaborate on that, why we would do it, and I guess what's the benefit of it?
Sure. So last year, the Parkdale streaming was approved in the budget. We delayed that work because there was some talk of combining the EMO in there. Once we got confirmation that that wouldn't be happening, I started the RFP process. It just, it's out now, and it's, it won't be complete until a little bit later, but the RFP is public now.
Counsel. It's all already under, yeah, yeah, it's in the budget. Yeah.
About that, I think somewhere, yeah.
Just to give you some information, that this chamber is used for advisory committees, it's used for standing committees. So advisory committees, it's a chamber, so we're just trying to narrow that in the Parkdale Room where we can televise, use live stream, and use the speaker, use the mics to gain or pick up all public information.
So all meetings, like youth advisory committees, seniors active, advisory, people with disabilities? Okay. All right, thanks.
Counsel Yankoff. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I'm just, I'm just wondering, kind of back to what Counsel McCabid said earlier tonight. We've got two items in here, capital items, that are for police services, and I understand they're IT-related, but if you go back to the police budget, there's IT-related items in the capital budget there. I don't, I'm just curious, why are we not putting them all into one so that we actually have a true reflection of what we're spending in each of the capital budgets? And I know I asked this in committee, and it was explained that it was, these were things that IT had to maintain, but I'm just wondering if, you know, now that we've got our senior leadership team here, if we can just clarify, like, why we have that? And we also have fire inspection records database that, to me, would fall under fire. So if that could just be, explain to me why they're here and not there, why some are there and some aren't. Thanks.
Rory?
Sure. So the reason we kind of picked that point where IT is administering and maintaining the system of, and it then belongs to the IT budget, the reason for that is because we've seen a lot of duplication of services, servers being purchased that could do multiple usages. So we kind of decided that the best way to do that would be to keep IT responsible for those purchases, and we can combine things where it's possible. That's the reasoning behind that decision.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Rory, I feel like I saw a reference to cybersecurity efforts. It might have been in the CAO's presentation as a priority. I'm not seeing any reference to it here. Did I, is that something that we took off the list or, because I think I was calling that as a priority for IT to combat cybersecurity threats that we may have here at City Charlestown?
So most of our cybersecurity efforts would fall under operational. Yeah.
I think more of an infrastructure perspective, but that's fine.
Yeah, we purchased most of the cybersecurity-related infrastructure in years past, so they'll be coming back in future years, but not this year.
Okay. So operationally, it's there identified, I was thinking the infrastructure thing.
Mr. Jayon Jenkins. Just one second.
Through the, through Your Worship, to Counselor Yankoff. I agree that we could benefit from allocating some of the costs for some of our infrastructure to, that are specific to some of the services that we deliver, to more accurately reflect the cost of providing those services. And that will help paint a picture in terms of our funding discussions with the province of the cost of providing placing, the cost of providing road maintenance, that kind of thing. So, and it was brought up in our discussion on the operating budget as well, in terms of allocating costs differently or more effectively. So certainly is something that we're looking at moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you for your presentation, Rory. Question I have is, you look at the council chambers, and I don't see any money earmarked for any work to be done on the chambers. If you look at the technology that is being utilized today, maybe compare it to other chambers across the country, how, where are we at? Are we, are we lagging behind? Are we in the mainstream? Are we further ahead? People are watching the meetings, and somehow, or sometimes they find it hard to see everyone that's in the chamber. The cameras don't really capture everyone that's here. For example, people sitting along the rails that are involved in the council meetings, whether it be senior administration, and the people want to know who exactly are here, they're involved with the discussions, but they can't really see them. My question is, why doesn't that camera pick up everyone that's in the room?
So when we were doing the refresh a few years back, it was decided that we wanted to keep things as simple as possible because of the size of the room. We don't have room to add a big technology center. We don't have room to have additional staff in here controlling all of the complicated systems. If you look at some of the more modern chambers, they have an entire space behind the chamber, beside the chamber. It's an entire room dedicated to that type of technology. So that's, that's when we were doing that refresh. That's why we made that decision. I mean, it's, it's not that it can't be done, it's that we were looking to keep things as simple as possible for the people who are controlling the technology.
What would it cost, Rory, to bring it up to the standards that, you know, people have that expectation so that they can have an appreciation, be able to visualize who's speaking? It could be a manager of a department or another member of the senior management team. People want to, they want to see who's talking, what department they're associated with, and they want to become better informed. So I'm just looking for, do you have a ballpark figure?
I wouldn't have any, any numbers at the moment, but it, given the room that we have, it would be a very difficult thing to do. It's not, not impossible, but it would be a sizable amount of new technology required in order to deliver that in the space that we have.
Counsel Bernard.
Rory, the Parkdale streaming technology.
It was the budget last year. What was reading, you said it never got done?
Sorry. It was delayed because there was some, some talk of combining the project with some, an EMO, moving the EMO into the Parkdale Room. So once we got confirmation that that wouldn't be occurring, that's when I restarted the RFP.
So what's going on with the EMO?
I believe it's staying where it is.
In the Sherwood Room.
I believe, in the Sherwood Room. Yeah.
Okay, it's in the Sherwood Room. So the Sherwood Room obviously is all wired for it.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, looks good.
Yeah.
Smells good. Feels good. Okay. So next is, you don't want to do Bell Line or East Link?
We're going to do Richard.
Well, Bell Line's next.
He's last, right? He's second.
Okay, yay, nay. Richard, we'll put you on.
Thank you very much.
Just one second. Hold on, Richard.
We're doing sewer and water? Thank you, Your Worship. Members of council.
It's the last one. It's the last half.
Best for last.
Yep, we'll just come back, because that way he doesn't have to stay around. Richard may want to stay around anyways.
Thank you, Your Worship, members of council. The water and sewer capital budget, we begin with our projects where we combine our efforts with that of Public Works, which is a great step forward for us, and there's a number of projects where we are working together, and that will be our model as we move forward. So the first is Eastern Gateway, the project that we are well into now. We've already replaced almost several hundred meters of water, and the final tender for that has been awarded. We are working through that project and should finish this year. There's just one last little piece of water main to look at. Our next project is Seaview Boulevard. It's been on the radar for a couple of years, and we have just awarded that tender, and that work will be starting anytime soon as well. University Avenue reconstruction, we're just going to do some planning for that project this year. The bulk of the work pushed off into future years, but we need some money in there to do the engineering along with Public Works. Water Street, we've also pushed that out to next year. We are working on the engineering for it, but it will be ready to go into the future. Spencer Drive Extension, that's where we are looking at putting in an extension to Spencer Drive so that development can occur in that area. We're looking at the water and sewer aspect for it this year, and the key to that project is figuring out how to work with the developers in the area to have them cover those costs. And there were developers in today meeting with us, and our hope is that we can complete the water and sewer aspect of the project for them, and they can begin their developments. Then the following year, we'd look at the actual above-ground road construction. Next portion of our capital budget is our water and sewer works. That's our water supply systems, our water distribution, and our sanitary sewer collection system. Our first piece is capital planning for the work that we need to do into the future. One of the things council will remember from our first budget discussion was that our infrastructure is aging and our city is growing. So we need to start doing the engineering on how we're going to address those needs and look to work together with Public Works, that we're trying to do water and sewer infrastructure in line with the road work. Then our Mount Edward Road Booster Station, that is ongoing work. It started last year, and we will finish that work early this year. Mall Pec Station refurbishment.
Doran?
Let me make just a comment there, Mayor Brown.
Can he just finish, and then we'll let you go first as chair?
We're following along. I'm following, and he didn't start at the top. I'm trying to pick up where he missed. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong budget here.
Are we on line 18? Are you on line 18 right now on the spreadsheet?
Yes, but he may not. This is the spreadsheet developed for tonight where we grouped things. He may be looking at the older version where things were scattered.
Yeah, so Counsel, Counsel Doran, what you're looking at is the one that was sent out by Tracy's office, from Betty and Dan. What he, what we have in front of us is the updated version.
Okay.
If he's watching on live stream, okay, just go to YouTube, and you'll be able to look at the screens, both screens that are in the chamber, correct? Is that right? Yeah. Counsel Doran, just do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we can firm with us when you can see that, rather importantly, my chair can see the budget that I'm presenting for them.
That'd be great. It'll take me a second, just one second.
Yeah, let's just take a minute there, just to...
Well, I have all the items there. I'm just trying to follow along with them quickly, but just go ahead. Sorry about the interruption.
And then go to City of Charlestown YouTube. Is that correct? Yeah.
Appreciate the interruption. Apologies, but we did, wanted to group things better for council's understanding tonight. My apologies on that. The previous version was following our accounting numbering system, but going forward, we'll do a better job of making, grouping things better for you. So the next is the Mall Pec Station refurbishment. That's our historic water station building, and we need to look at the roof and doing some maintenance on that building. Then our collector sewer lift station rehabilitation. We have 36 smaller lift stations throughout the city, and each one of them is getting older, and it's costing between 500,000 and a million dollars to do the work on each of those. So each year, we need to tackle one of those because with more than 30 of them, it's more than 30 years before we're getting back to them. So that is work on those older, smaller lift stations. Residential metering, that's, we need more meters as the city grows, and we're also getting into the point where we're now replacing meters that we put into homes. So each year, we need to be putting money into our residential metering program. Wellfield protection, that is looking at opportunities to purchase land in vicinity to our wellfields so that we can protect that land, keeping in mind water quality and with climate change, water quantity protection. We can purchase those parcels of land, reforest them, and then we're able to help the amount of water that gets collected for our water supply into the future. I'm sure many of you, you're out walking in the woods, and you can see that snow stays there much longer than any other time, so that really helps with the recharge around our wellfields. So the more of that land that we can purchase and protect, we can help ensure that we have safe, clean drinking water well into the future. Then our water distribution system upgrades, that's our wellfields. We need some new pumps, looking at our chlorine system upgrades. Motor vehicles, it's a couple of new trucks for our fleet. We have almost 20 vehicles, so we need to be looking at replacing those each year as well in some of our bigger service vehicles, vehicles that we have that go out and we work on our manholes or the valves or our fire hydrants. Tangible capital asset purchases, that's where we lump in any of the new equipment that we need. Big saws to cut the pipes or generators, pumps to de-water our excavations, and this year, looking at a new trench box. And a trench box is the protective piece of equipment that we take when we do an excavation in the ground. It's putting a metal box in the ground to protect our workers while they're working in that excavation. Very important, anytime we go more than four feet into the ground, we have to use a trench box for their protection to make sure that the earth doesn't fall in around them. And then contingency for anything that might come up over the year, we are a little under budget in an area. There's 200,000 that we carry as a contingency on the water supply and collection system part of our budget. The next portion of our budget is the wastewater treatment plant. So the first project is just the tail end of a large project where we added new primary clarifiers, just a few hundred thousand dollars to finish off some of the smaller aspects to that project. And our wastewater lift station rehabilitation, that's our larger lift stations. And our wastewater lift station rehabilitation, that's our larger lift stations in the city. And for the last couple of years, we've been working on making improvements to those lift stations. And that's just the final piece to that project. We should wrap that project up this year. Our digester, last year, we completed the primary digester. And this year, we're looking at the secondary digester. It cost a million dollars for us to take the primary digester down, do some maintenance on it and then bring it back online. And we need to budget to do the secondary digester this year. And in the budget, we're carrying a million dollars. Our aeration tank rehabilitation, just doing the beginning portion of that project this year with some of the sensors. And we've pushed the bigger piece to it with perhaps blower upgrades out into future years. And that could be a couple of million dollar project. Similar with our polymer and our de-watering upgrades, that's managing the solids aspect at the wastewater treatment plant. So at the wastewater treatment plant, there's two things that happen. We clean the water. As we clean that water, it produces a solid material, our biosolids. And we use the polymer and de-watering equipment. It centrifuges like your salad spinner, pushes off the water and leaves the solids behind. That material then goes out onto agricultural fields. It's an expensive process and we need to do some upgrades to that in the coming years. And that's the first step of it this year. Then other capital projects at the wastewater treatment plant, that's some of the smaller things, although those smaller things are still hundreds of thousands of dollars. There's a grit system that needs to be replaced. There's blowers and a collection system for that. And we'll be, that's, that's one of the projects that's within that other capitals project. And then our control system upgrade at the wastewater treatment plant. Many of the computers that run the wastewater treatment plant are getting old and that's a project to replace those computer systems that run the plant. And then motor vehicles at the wastewater treatment plant, there's a truck that's on order. I don't believe we're going to receive it this year, so I need the money in next year's budget. That's actually a carryover item. And then contingency for anything that we might be under budget or unforeseen capital expenses in the year coming up. And the waste gas burner replacement was on our budget, but I'm hopeful that we can push that replacement out another year. So we've moved it out into the future year. And that's everything.
Okay, Richard, thank you. Councillor Twill?
For your presentation, a couple of questions for you. You know, recently heard in the media here about a week ago about the infrastructure, particularly in the older part of the city with regards to the pipes, you know, lead pipes to be exact, you know, 100 years old. I hear that in the media. So my question is, are we going to be undertaking a major plan of action to replace those pipes? And I know you have to work with Public Works when it comes to, uh, uh, street rehabilitation. But when I hear that, um, you know, about the lead pipes in our city, um, is there anything we can do to expedite the process of replacing those lead pipes? That's my first question.
Yes, and it is important to recognize that we are doing that work. So Passmore Street, a recent whole street rehabilitation project was one of the streets where there were lead services and we replaced all the services on, on that street. So, and you're right, there are many streets in downtown Charlottetown. And that's the engineering work we'll do and the plans that we've put in place. And we have had, anytime we go in to redo a street, we'll be tackling those lead services on the street. And the way to speed that up, of course, is more money. And we are seeking partner funding to complete those projects.
Richard is, yeah, you know, like again, and I, and I know you're, you're planning, you're constantly planning and you're doing on a, you know, a go, go forward basis. But again, I'll reiterate, when, when you hear that publicly, what, what can we do to assure our residents that, that we are going as fast as we possibly can? I understand these are big projects, they're big expenditures, but somehow I think we need to do some kind of a marketing campaign, public relations campaign to, to, uh, to inform the residents to, you know, what, what the process is, where the funding's coming from and what the residents can expect. I bring that forward for your, for your consideration. My second question is, Richard, is, you know, we got an email from the CAO regarding the treatment plant. There was an overflow. It's not something that we experience a whole lot, but reference was made to, uh, you know, improving, enhancing our treatment plant. I'm not sure exactly what that entails. Uh, I'm looking, I'm looking for you to give me some, uh, give me a bit of a synopsis on that. And, and as you know, uh, we've taken in the sludge from the town of Stratford. And because we've taken on their sludge, if we're going to be doing any type of work to the treatment plant, will the town of Stratford also be requested to make a financial, a financial contribution to, uh, to, uh, to the city of Charlottetown and more specifically the water and sewer department that oversees the water, oversees the treatment plant?
Mr. McKeown, do we charge him 15% surcharge or is it more? Wastewater coming from Stratford?
Thank you, your worship. So we will address that one, I guess, first. So Stratford pays their fair share based on the volume that comes to the wastewater treatment plant. And then in addition to that, there is a 15% administration charge. So whatever flow is coming through the plant, we look at the flow that's coming from Stratford and Charlottetown. We look at how much it costs to do upgrades to it or to run the plant. And Stratford pays their fair share for, based on how much they use of the wastewater treatment plant. On the collection side or the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant, so we recently had that snow melt and rain event. And unfortunately, it's, it is now rare. We used to have 50 times per year where our wastewater treatment plant couldn't handle the water that was going to the plant. And we've put millions of dollars into improving our collection system. And that's where our money is best spent, is making improvements to our wastewater collection system, making sure that extra water isn't getting into our system. We also now need to work with our residents to make sure that we don't have sump pumps connected to our system. So it used to be okay within the Canadian plumbing code and still is okay within the Canadian plumbing code to have a sump pump connected to the sanitary system. But the province of PEI and within Charlottetown, we should not do that because that water then goes into our sanitary system that needs to be treated at our wastewater treatment plant. And it shouldn't be put into that system. And it used to be okay for us because our collection system used to be combined, both stormwater and sanitary sewer used to flow through the same pipes at times. But we've spent millions of dollars to separate that in the city. And it's important for our residents to now help us out and make sure that sump pumps aren't connected to the system. And we still need to do work on our sanitary collection system. Some of the water is coming in through manholes and places. And if underground, there's a crack in the pipe, that's an opportunity for groundwater to get into our pipes. So as we reline or we replace our sanitary sewer system, it will help at the wastewater treatment plant because that water that we don't need to treat won't get there anymore.
Casper Bernard?
Thank you.
And Casper Bernard?
Richard, um, I'm just looking at last year's, last year's budget. And after net, after net funding, we were at 7 million. And this year, we're up to 3.5 million, or sorry, 10.5, 3.5 million increase. But I noticed you never had anything last year in for wellfield, uh, purchasing of land, I guess, is what the 2 million is. Is that correct?
Uh, last year, we had 600,000 in for wellfield protection. And this year at committee, we, the committee made a recommendation to increase it to 2 million.
I wonder if, uh, the big jump, I wonder if that shouldn't be, you know, a million dollars. Like, I wonder why you picked two. It was 600,000 dollars. I, I do agree with the well for protection, but I think a million dollars, the budget's probably, it's probably sufficient.
Yeah, so it's, it's interesting. If you look at the cost to purchase land now on Prince Edward Island, it has surprised me. But recently hearing that an acre of land can sell for $10,000. So when we are looking at purchasing land up, up to 100 acres, it does start to cost a million dollars to purchase those properties.
Yeah, so then let's put a million in.
Okay, I mean, that, that's for council, council to, to review.
Okay.
Anyways, we can, we'll just park that for now, councillor. Okay, Councillor McTarr?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I think in response to that, um, you know, I was part of the discussion around the welfare protection. So I knew, we know that we had 600,000 budget last year. Did we spend that in any purchase of any land for wellfield protection?
We, we did not spend that money last year, no.
So we're, we're asking for two. And I think that goes in line, councillor Bernard, with some of the discussions we're having about some of this land that's available in large acreage to protect these wellfields as the debate that we had here as to whether or not to allow for that. So certainly the committee, or me being on the committee, supported 2 million to go forward, so continue to support that.
Councillor Mac?
Thank you for that, Richard. Guess my first comment is, is that your award-winning water is really expensive.
If, if that's a question, I'd like to...
No, that's a comment, that's not a question. No question involved. I, I did have a question though, Richard, and I kind of wanted to go back to our November pre-budget deliberations. And I thought that we talked about an urgency, kind of tying into what councillor Twill was saying, that there was a, a level of urgency around Sydney Street, Great George, all piping around there. Am I, am I missing the mark or am I, as Roger Clemens said, misremembering? I don't know. Or is there something there that, just kind of thinking that, um, I don't know, maybe I, maybe I misunderstood or, uh, just kind, it kind of ties into that, you know, we're looking at doing our streets worst to first and trying to get at the 100-year-old, which I support in getting at, you know, our worst-case scenarios. And I, I thought that there was some talk about that. Maybe if you could refresh me on that, that was a few months ago, maybe I didn't quite get it.
Yeah, it's not, not any street necessarily in particular in downtown Charlottetown or even out into our suburbs. We've got a couple of classes of pipe that are a concern. And we're doing a study right now to identify those areas. And that's part of the engineering work into the future to see which areas should be targeted. We, and we're, when we are making our worst-first list, what we look at is our main break frequency in particular, and then also where we have our, our lead service lines. But in particular, it's looking at the history of our main breaks. So there was an area south of Belvidere between St. Peters Road and Mount Edward Road that had been first identified by us. And we tackled that area, it's probably five or six years ago now. We went in and we relined all of the water mains and all of the sanitary sewer mains in that area. So that was our first identified area from our worst to address first. And since that time, we are partly waiting on partner funding and new project initiatives to come forward since, since COVID. COVID took a focus for our federal tax dollars and we're waiting to see what the next funding programs will be.
Thank you for that, Richard.
Councillor Macleod?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Richard, just, just curious, staying with what's in the ground and the old infrastructure, the old pipe, the old lead pipe. It doesn't seem to, we're in that call snap at times. It's not unusual to see the notices come out, freeze-ups, you know. Would, would a lot of that be the, the old piping as an example? Would that be, would that be an example of that? And if it is, would we expect then with Passmore being redone, that that would be not something that you'd expect to have happen in a real call snap going forward?
That's certainly, certainly my hope. I'm waiting to hear you say, oh, Passmore has a break, but it shouldn't. That's a new pipe that we're putting in ground. It does relate to the, partly the age of the pipe, but also sometimes the pipe itself. So we do see our oldest pipe that went into the ground more than 100 years ago. Some of that is starting to fail. There's also a pipe that was put into the ground in the 1950s, which was right after World War II. And we changed how we manufactured the pipe. And we also maybe didn't have as much of the skilled labor when we were putting that pipe in the ground. And it's another type of pipe where we're starting to see challenges. And so those are the two eras of pipe where we have challenges. If you look at our map of where our main breaks are taking place, you don't see it out in our further suburbs with the newer pipe and the PVC pipe.
Councillor Bernard?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, have we got an update on the CCBF funding, what we had left in reserves? Is anybody able to find that for us? The old gas tax fund?
Oh, the community, Canada Community Building Fund? Do you have anything in that? Betty or Dan? I think it was asked the other night.
Yes, so your, your worship, uh, manager Betty did do some work on that and she's prepared to speak to it now and answer some questions.
Do you want to make a contrast, comparison, is that what you're asking?
I was just looking for, yeah. We always had a little bit of surplus there.
Richard, when you talked about the laying of pipe back in the 50s, we have pipe that water is flowing into it. What's the term for that?
You mean when groundwater is entering our sanitary, yep.
Or either what, because of the fittings?
Yeah, infiltration.
Infiltration.
So we look at inflow, which is more coming in through the top, and then infiltration through the cracks in the pipe.
So is that a big issue in the downtown or areas that had piping put in during the 50s, infiltration?
Yes, I mean, it's a challenge for us. That's why we see our flows more than triple during a wet weather event.
Right. I think that's what we discovered during the Brighton Combined Sewer Project in 2003. And then did we not do the Spring Park Combined Sanitary Storm Sewer?
Yeah, so that's a little bit different. Those systems were actually designed to take both the stormwater and the sanitary. So they were, those, those catch basins and manholes were all together. So rainwater went in and helped flush the sanitary water out into the harbor at a time before we had our wastewater treatment plant.
Right. So both projects, we put in new stormwater, wastewater and water systems in the Brighton Combined Project and in the Spring Park, correct?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned, we used to have 50 times per year where we couldn't manage the water that was going through our collection system. And now we're down to less than five. And we've even had a year where there were no events where we had more water than we could manage at the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, do we have it? Okay, Betty?
Thank you, your worship. So I have this up on the screen here. There's a summary of our CCBF funding. So these are the projects here that we're currently, um, we have in the, in the capital budget now. This is the portion of the funding that comes from the CCBF fund. So that these are the totals that is in the capital budget. This is the amount that's currently sitting in our deferred revenue. So that's CCBF funding from previous years that we have not yet used.
Right.
This is our anticipated allocation for the 24, 25 year. So we've, I've just used what we got in 23, 24. Usually it's a little, little bit more each year, but just to be a little on the conservative side, I've just left it the same until we hear further. And so down here, that is, well, actually this, this number here is what is as yet unallocated. So 1.187 million dollars we have not specifically allocated to a capital project at the moment.
So Betty, um, you get the six point, you get 6 million, you get the 3.6 million that you're expecting this year for the nine. So where is eight of it being used? Because I got two different figures here in Water and Sewer. I got them at basically 3 million in this one. And I don't know, the, the new one here, I thought I seen close to a million dollars. So is Water and Sewer using three or they're using 800,000?
Three.
Richard?
They have allocated 800,000 to the booster station, 1.2 million to Seaview and 1.2 million to the collector sewer lift stations.
So the 3 million is still in, okay.
And then over, over here, so Public Works has 1.75, 2.75 for street resurfacing and the 1.08 is for the victorious shoreline protection.
So all the capital money, money going, funding going into streets, street surface, resurfacing is coming from CCBF. So we have 1.2 million. So we have 1.2 million over.
Yeah, okay. Thank, thank you, Betty.
Which, which we could allocate, we could take from if we want to add to, right? Which would be hundreds, 100, 100 cent dollars, they're 100 cent federal dollar, yeah. Okay. Okay, good. Okay, councillor Twill?
Richard, Richard, if you don't mind, I want to go back to the treatment plan. So please explain it to me again. If we're going to do any type of improvements, enhancements to the treatment plan, what can we expect from the town of Stratford in terms of providing funding for infrastructure and also operational?
Their portion of our operating cost runs, and capital cost runs about 12%. Their contribution to the flow at the wastewater treatment plant's running around 12%.
Is that it?
Yes, yes.
Wow, that's all?
Yep, I mean, Charlestown is much larger than Stratford, if you look at them.
Oh, yeah, no, I know. Yeah, so we're using 88.
And development is taking place in Stratford. Stratford's probably one of the fastest-growing municipalities in this province.
Yes.
And so are we, but, you know, there's a lot of growth taking place there. I just hope that, you know, we're, we're, we're getting what's, what we should be getting, again, in terms of infrastructure dollars, operational costs, because it does put additional pressure on that treatment plant. And I just don't want to see the taxpayers and the city of Charlestown saddled with a majority of the cost, again, from an operational and from a capital perspective.
Okay.
No, appreciated, and I think it's important, and you, you raised the point, there's a difference between the taxpayers of Charlestown and the ratepayers for the water and sewer utility. Also important to recognize that the water and sewer utility, we have customers throughout eastern Prince of Rhode Island. All of the septicage that is collected from septic tanks in eastern UPEI, that's treated by our wastewater treatment plant, and those residents cover those costs. We charge the septic haulers, we charge Stratford. Anybody who is getting water from our utility outside the city of Charlestown, they pay the Charlestown Water and Sewer Corporation, they're not taxpayers, and the money that we collect for the water and sewer utility goes to water and sewer operations. So that, that's why we have two separate budgets. We have a city corporation budget and a water and sewer utility budget.
Plus you have customers in Bradley, too. Yep. Councillor Bernard, do you want to sum up, or do you want, looking for more funding?
It's gone now.
Okay. Councillor Dron, I can't see you, so do you have, can you see the screens now?
Yes, I can, yeah.
Did you want to add, delete, comment?
Well, yeah, it's just, for information purposes, I guess, you know, since it's a capital budget, these contingency funds of 200,000 in each, we're not borrowing all that money. It's just available if we need it. Am I correct in saying that? Like, the Spencer Drive extension is 2.5 million, you know, with partner funding. If we don't use that, we're not borrowing it, right?
So.
Would that be correct?
Richard, go ahead, Richard.
That, that is correct. That is correct.
Thank you. All those are just my concerns. I just, the numbers look big, but it's just like the rest of the, the city. If, if we don't start and finish these projects, we're not borrowing it. So it's not looking like we're borrowing 18 million, but if the projects come forward, the, the money will be there to use, you know, in an appropriate manner if, if the projects come, come forward, right? That's, I just wanted clarification on that.
Good. Richard, can you verify it?
That is correct.
Okay. Councillor MacLeire?
Yeah, yeah, Richard, just, just understand, just a trigger there when you said about the other user groups, eastern part of the province and Stratford and stuff, so would I be right in assuming, or maybe I'm not, that, that, for instance, if, if we're, if, if it's decided that the Charlestown Water and Sewer rates increase 3%, is that, is that also 3% for all user groups across your grid, i.e. the eastern part and the Stratfords, is that?
Yes, so included in our recommendation is a 3% increase to the septic rate. And then anybody, any water and sewer utility customer, they pay that rate for water and sewer.
Councillor Beck, you do have a question?
Just a quick, could you go up to the top of that screen? I was having the same problem councillor Dron was. I was looking at my screen, and I didn't see some of those projects. If you could just leave that there for a minute. Okay, thanks. Good, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Bella Lion here, is the chairman here? No? Okay, okay. So are you going to present on behalf of the chair?
Thank you, your worship. So I'll go through the capital budget for Bella Lion Centre, or Cary as we know it. Just a bit of background, we signed a funding cost-sharing arrangement, operation agreement with the Cary Board back in 2003. At that time, there was no operating deficits anticipated, and at that time, the operating losses, that the maximum call was quantified at about $79,000 per year. As operations unfolded and became evident that that wasn't a sustainable target, back in 2010, the city signed a revised agreement, which essentially opened the city to cover 87% of the operating deficit of, of that facility. And the 13% was covered by the University of Prince of Rhode Island. And so we're, we're in that situation now. The capital budget is shared on the same basis, so the city, once we approve the capital budget, we're responsible to pay our contribution at 87%, less anything that they can get funded by commercial tenants in, in the building. And the university, 13%. So what you have here is, is an outline of the budget items that have been identified. The big one is replacement of refrigeration systems for Rink B, a big project about 5.6 million, and they've, they've asked for about a million and a half to be spent in the coming fiscal year. There are a number of other capital improvements, which you can see there. I, I don't have detailed knowledge of the individual items, but certainly if you have questions on those, we can make the inquiry of Alan, the manager, and our chair, and we can get back to you. I would want to draw your attention to the totals in terms of their five-year capital expenditure plan. They're looking to spend upwards of, a little south of 16 million dollars in the next five years. Some fairly major upgrades that are, that they feel are required. So it certainly is something that we want to look at as administration and as council in terms of how we partner with the Cary Board, and similarly, as you'll, you'll see in the, the East Link Centre budget, we, we would have a wish to, you know, have a, have a good, a good objective look at how we partner with other funding partners and how those operating costs are, are shared between municipalities, other levels of government, and, and our user groups. Any questions on the Bella Lion that I can answer?
So did we invite the chair or the GM to show up? Like, this, this is substantial. Were they invited?
They were not invited, yeah.
Okay.
But they did come to the budget workshop, though, and they went through their budget. I don't, I haven't gone back and compared it to this one, but they did present an operating and capital budget at the budget workshop, the Saturday session. So because they did that, I didn't reach out to them to come again.
Okay, councillor Tarr.
Dan, can you clarify just again, is, is the total here that we're looking at, the 1.65, is that the 87% that we would be allocating to? And then the other percent would be on their own operating or capital budget?
That's right, yes, councillor Tarr. If you look just, if you look to the screen there, you can, you can see the top two. There's partner share of capital, that's from commercial clients, and then seven, 13% from UPI, and the balance is, is for us.
Yeah, I think it's, sorry, just, I'm on the old sheet, because I can't find the new one, so I didn't see that part. Okay, thank you. And I assume the same would be, for the next one, I'll just ask a question now for East Link, same deal?
I will get Betty to clarify that, because we don't have the partner funding isolated on that one, but we'll.
Thank you.
Councillor McCabe?
I'm just looking at line 18 and line 20, so sidewalk replacement and staff lot resurfacing. I thought we had discussions that we were going to try to partner up with Public Works to try to tender those out to get a better pricing on some of those projects, rather than, I mean, $40,000 for staff.
Can't do it this year, we've got no sidewalk budget.
We'll have a sidewalk budget, but that wouldn't be my priority over the people that are waiting in our community. But I thought we were going to look at partnering up for tendering for better pricing, kind of partnering in through Public Works on that. That was requested. This was, this isn't a new request, we've seen this request before. So it obviously didn't get done last year, it's back again, but I thought that was kind of what we were talking about.
Yeah, I remember that as well.
Did you want to address that?
Yep. Yep.
Yeah, that means we'll have to put 90,000 sidewalks. Councillor Twill?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at this expenditure, it's a pretty big expenditure, you know? And I just wonder, is it just, you know, something that, okay, well, it's got to get done, but does it have to be done all this year, this year? I mean, we're not prioritize some of these expenditures. I mean, you know, we've got to fight it out in terms of trying to provide infrastructure for, for the rest of the city. And if you look at this facility, you know, we're paying the freight. City of Charlestown's paying the freight for this facility. And when a presentation was made here, and Betty's correct, when the representative was here, I think it was the finance manager, Betty, and I asked him point blank, there's other residents in the greater Charlestown area that's utilizing this facility. And I asked the question, did you contact other municipalities to see if they'd be willing to make a contribution to, you know, capital cost, operating cost, whatever the case may be? This is not just a Charlestown facility. This facility's being used by many islanders. And yet, city taxpayers are paying the freight, and I think that's unfair, I really do. And somewhere along the line, we've got to change the formula a bit. I mean, you know, it's great for UPEI, I mean, it's a nominal fee, and then we're paying the whole thing. I don't know why we're just not managing it, or, or being, having it administrated here with the city, because we're paying, what, 87, 90% of the cost? So, so, you know, I, I would like, I don't know, but you, Betty, or you, Danny, or whoever, go back, have a meeting with the management, look, you know, is this a wish list, or let's prioritize some of this stuff, because this is a lot of money, to come in here and walk in and say, you know, 1.0, basically 1.7, and then, of course, you get into, you know, you get into changes, you get into cost overruns, next thing you know, you're up to 1.8. So to come in here and just, you know, throw the list at us like this, I, I don't know. I mean, may, maybe, maybe we need someone in the city of Charlestown to go out and do a bit of an inspection to see, in fact, if all these expenditures need to be done this year, because this is a lot of money. And we got to start looking at other funding partners to make a financial contribution to this facility, because it's not just a Charlestown facility. And the manager agreed at the time that they were contemplating, or I'm paraphrasing, entertaining that idea. I'd like to find out if, in fact, they have. I mean, we've got Stratford, we've got Cornwall, we've got Dunstafenich, we've got other parts of the city. You know, they, they got to come to the table, too, and, and maybe even the provincial government for that matter. Because, you know, the, the cost of this facility and the cost of utilizing this facility, we have many citizens in our community can't even afford to be in that facility. So I, I see, again, I see something there where, where it's, it's, where it's benefiting some islanders, but it's not benefiting all the, all the citizens of Charlestown.
Okay. Councillor Bernard? Response from, invite them back? You want, you want to speak to Alan? Manager, is that what you're asking? Go ahead, Betty.
Thank you, your worship. My, my comment there is, this budget has been approved by the Cary Board, and city does have representation on the Cary Board.
Four members.
So the city, I, I, because of that, I would assume the city has had an opportunity to have input through those four members on their board.
Yep. And just remember, it's, it's, it's an independent board, it's, you know, they're duly sanctioned, and until they come for money. Councillor, we'll come right back, councillor Bernard, then we'll come back to you. Councillor Bernard?
Betty, those ones that are on the board, is there any of them here tonight? Any of those members sit on the Cary Board?
No, no.
Okay. I ask that because I go to Cary quite a bit. The sidewalk on the arena side was done. It was done this summer. The parking lot, I mean, I, I park in it three times a week, and it doesn't look like it needs to be done. So whether it was done last year or two years ago, so it'd be nice, are these old? Because it's saying sidewalk on the arena side for sidewalk replacement. I can tell you that was done this summer. We walk it every day. So it may be nice to, to find out, are these done? The staff lot resurfacing, I'm not sure what's considered the staff. Is that, is that on the west side of Cary? Is that considered the staff parking lot?
Think the staff, yes, it would be on the west side, where are the pool?
Okay, so that one, that one may very well need to be done. I, I know the one, the arena side is, is fine. So the sidewalk replacement, I believe that's been done. You might want to get that confirmed.
Okay. Councillor Ramsay?
And Dan, and as you know, your worship, you and I were both at a lot of Panther games this year, and that, and just getting back to councillor Bernard, like, that sidewalk was done, because when the Panthers first started, we looked there, they had one side done up, and then that had roped off, and then the next side was done, I think after it's done there at the entrance, right? And then it was all done. And if it's the main parking lot that we're talking about, do we not do that during COVID, because there was less traffic at that time?
Which one, the one with the pool?
No, no, the, the other side, or the arena side.
That's done. It's, it's, this is the pool side.
So, you know, we need some clarification, because the sidewalk's already done. So where this is coming from, I don't know either. I mean, councillor Beck would know, too, walking in those doors.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you're focused at that time. Thank you.
Councillor Tarr?
Thank you, your worship. I guess I'm, you know, we're looking at line 26, the refrigeration systems. I mean, that's certainly the biggest ticket item, 1.5, you know, roughly over, and then in 25, 26, another 4 million. You know, what, what I struggle with here is UPEI and Andrews being the two major tenants of this building, and the city of Charlestown, you know, using for minor sports and other activities. It's, that's a, that's a huge contribution to the infrastructure that is being used by two other major tenants than most of the residents of Charlestown through minor sports. You know, I don't know what kind of refrigeration system this is, that it's 1.5 this, and then we jump to four. I don't know much about that, so I think we do need to get some more clarity around these, this, at least this particular line item. The others are smaller in nature, nonetheless, they add up to be, you know, bigger amounts, but, yeah, there's not a lot of contribution here, and who, who's the commercial funding partner? What is that? What does that generally mean?
There's the athletic club, there's the.
Yeah, there's, okay, there's Andrews and everything else contributing to that?
Yeah, one hundred and sixty-six thousand.
I mean, that's to the two and three, not that that's not appreciated and it's there, but it certainly doesn't cover, you know, we're on the hook for eighty-seven percent of those costs where we're not even the major user group there. So I'd like to get a little more information on what this one point five is. And it seems to be a bit of a disparity in that.
Counsel Twill.
And just to follow up, Counsel Bernard, I agree. That's why I raised the issues and concerns that I had earlier. I mean, it's great, you know, to say we have city representatives sitting on the board and, you know, it's great to say, oh, yeah, we'll pass that and just send it down to the city of Charlestown and they'll pay the freight. I believe that we need, maybe we need, you know, to have a look at the infrastructure. Maybe our senior staff need to go out there, do a walkthrough, have a look and say, okay, show us what you're talking about here, just to put things down on paper and just send it down to us and we're supposed to rubber stamp. I don't think so, I really don't. You know, like Counsel Ramsey pointed out, yeah, we did, we did do major work on that parking lot. And it's not just used by, you know, the users of Cary either. So, you know, like, we're paying for a lot of this infrastructure, but I have to question whether or not it's truly our responsibility. And when you have other people living outside the city limits that are using the facility, I mean, they're not paying for it in their taxes. So I think we've got to get a better deal, I really do. I think we've got to get a better deal. And we have to impress upon the management of the Cary facility that you need to reach out to other municipalities, you know, your residents are using it, we welcome them. But, you know, you've got to make a financial contribution, you've got to do it on an annual basis.
Yeah.
And furthermore, I think we need to go to the province because this is being used by residents across the province. And we're going to be doing enhancements and improvements and infrastructure and all those, all those, all those different requirements. There's got to be more funding partners. We've got to look at the formula, it needs to be changed up.
Yeah.
And I'm going to reiterate what I said earlier. A lot of residents in this community can't afford to use Cary. I mean, the cost of the swimming pool, all those things, a lot of residents can't afford it through no fault of their own. So we've got to change the whole dynamic. As far as I'm concerned, we need to, we need to do a true evaluation as to, you know, the usage from our residents versus residents outside the city and who's paying the freight.
Yeah. So the one point five million, that refrigeration system is the original system. That was, that's the original system. That's, just as Dan was saying, we're now going, the depreciative value of that is zero. So that has to be replaced. And other systems, we were on council when this was passed, so were you, Counsel Twill. It went, it was a twenty-three, twenty-four million dollar facility. So just let me finish. So if we're looking at differential fees, so we have pickleball players from Charlestown that go over to Stratford. We have walkers that live in the summer side area that go to the Cup and use their walk-in track. They could be coming from St. Eleanor's, Miss Cushe. They're not, there's no differential fee. So, and if we look at our walk-in track that we're, that will be opening in October at the Simmons Aquarain facility, are we going to be looking at saying, okay, are you from Charlestown, are you from Southport, Stratford? Like, I think what we need is, we've got a structural issue here that has to be replaced. And that's what happens with twenty, twenty-five-year-old facilities. Counsel McLeir. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. I'm going to stand up because I've been sitting for two and a half hours. Yeah, just staying with this, and to me, it jumps out, Dan CFO, and getting ready to redo our funding formula. I think these two, I think this and the East Link Center are two projects, you know how you did your spreadsheet for Simmons? And what is, what is our true cost of the city's current funding structure to these things? And in that, and if we could, if we could see that kind of on a spreadsheet, like the, you know, really dig into the weeds on the, you know, on the true costs. And if there's any way that there could be, could be data, I don't know if it's possible. I know everybody, I think, recognizes there's probably, there's probably lots of usage of islanders that are using this that are not residents of the city. And I don't know if there's any way to, I don't know if there's any way to quantify that. But I think it's, would be a good piece of information to know the true cost of this as we go and sit down with our funding partner, the province, to say, here's, in addition to everything else, the big stuff, our police and our fire and our recreation. But I think these two, these two, these two, the East Link Center and Bella Line have to have that data as well. Thanks.
Counsel Ron, can't see you out there, so you're looking in?
Yeah, no, I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, let's go to the East Link.
Ninety thousand in sidewalk replacement arena parking lot?
I said to Dan that both facilities, whatever it's costing us to borrow the money, pay the depreciation, we should be, that should be part of our funding. So that should be deducted from what they ask and they have to find ways to make that up.
No, no, but I just.
But I know what you're saying, so the ninety thousand, do we want to park that?
Yes. Yeah, to find out, yeah, we'll park because I'm sure it's done.
No, we parked a few of them, we'll go over them, yeah. Good? You don't want to park it?
I want to.
Go ahead.
I think, again, I'm going to reiterate, I think when you're looking at expenditures of that magnitude, somewhere along the line, we've got to go through this with a fine-toothed comb. It's great to say, we want all this work done, does the work need to be done this year?
Yes.
I haven't gotten an answer to that. And, you know, I mean, we've got other facilities in our city where our residents don't have access to facilities of this magnitude. And like, it's, it's truly unequal. There's a tremendous inequity here. And I think we need someone to go out and go through this. And, you know, Counsel Bernard talked about the sidewalk, well, what other amenities are out there that don't need to be done? I mean, we're, you know, is it a sense of urgency in all these different requests? It's not enough just to send us down, you know, a budget and say, here, we want you to do all this. Okay? So there's got to be, there's got to be greater scrutiny.
Well, the one point five they needed, they have to replace it. I've been told it, I think Eleanor's been told, it has to be replaced. Next year, refrigeration in the main rink has to be replaced, can't do anything about it unless we want to close the rink. That's it, like, it's like, no, 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 but I'm just saying, it's needed, it's twenty-two years old.
Like, the point that Counsel Bernard and I were both making is that as far as we're concerned, the sidewalk was done, so you're not going to pay another ninety thousand for the work that's already been done.
So we'll park it.
Yeah, that's right, that's all we're saying. Like, the ice place, or the ice plant has to be replaced, like, that's only common sense.
Just park that ninety thousand. Anyways, that, look, guys, we can bring them back in, we'll bring in the chair, bring in the board members from the city and the manager, they're going to tell you, you can't, if the refrigeration system breaks down, we send people home. I'm not going to do that. Okay? No? East Link? Okay, here's the next one.
So you'll see in front of you on the screen is the East Link Center capital budget that was submitted. I understand there's no partner funding applicable in this situation. Generally speaking, the city is responsible for eighty percent of the operating over deficit of the city, of the facility, and the province, twenty percent, I believe. This, I believe, is our portion of capital cost, so specific to the property that we would own there. Betty, did you want to have any further comment? You were around when they presented.
Counsel Twill.
No, my question was back to the Bella Line. When I, again, you know, when I talked about changing the formula, talked about courage and management at the facility, contacting other municipalities, the province, the federal government, you know, maybe they can be petitioned to make a financial contribution as well because it's not going to get any cheaper. And, you know, Counsel Bernard pointed out with the sidewalks, well, what else doesn't need to be done that we're not aware of? I don't know, right? I don't know. That's why I'm asking the questions. So we need to, again, we need to go through this with a fine-toothed comb. It's great to say, here's our wish list, and we'll just send it down to city council and they'll rubber stamp it.
Okay. Trevor, Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question, sixty thousand for basketball floor resurfacing, do we still have a basketball team playing out there? I don't believe we do.
Dan? You want to park that? Park it, okay. Well, I, I know, okay, just one sec. What else, another question? Counsel Ramsey.
I had the exact same question because the basketball team was supposed to start last year in the league folder, remember? So, so why do you want to resurface the floor for sixty thousand dollars? I don't know.
No, they kept their money in New York. Counsel Beck.
Yeah, I did a one, made same question. But the other thing is, I'm just wondering, not questioning the use of it, what's a pylon sign? Is that the, is that the, my understanding might be this, is that part of the problem with the East Link Center, I think they alluded to it before, is they've got a static sign on the wall, it's hard to read, any upcoming events? You have to go in, it's got those letters, you replace the letters one at a time. Is this pylon sign something that's down a little more higher visible area? Is that what, is that what that's all about, to try and promote events a little bit better?
If I may, your worship, I might take a stab at that, just Googling what a pylon sign is.
So am I.
It looks like.
Well, I Googled it too, but I didn't really get a great, I didn't get, I didn't get a great answer to it, so I thought I might get it here a better answer tonight.
The vertical sign that's outside of the East Link Center is what they're referring to. Is there one out there right now?
There's nothing, there's, no, there's a flat, flat above the, the.
Main entrance.
Storage entrance or the delivery entrance there on Kensington Road. If you look above there, there's like a, I don't know, a twelve-by-twelve square old board that has static plastic letters. I was watching them today, they had to get the Jimmy lift, to get, scissor lift, to get people up there to put them in individually. So I think, I think what the idea was to try and, from my understanding, and again, I'm going back, I think they mentioned it back in the pre-budget consultation. So it'd be a little bit more at street level, on the grassy area.
Pylon sign is with the new signage for Royal Crossing that blew down Grand Fiona? When you drive into, drive into Royal Crossing, it's, it's an L shape or it's a three, three frame or three-sided.
Is it, is it static or does it, is it electronic?
It can be both. I think they want to go with electronic, similar to Confederation Center and other, yeah. So it's not the signage on the wall, it's the signage that you would see, well, you go to Lenox Superstore, all the stores that are lined up there on that sign, that's a pylon sign.
Gotcha.
So they can make a reader board, they can make a reader board out of the two, yeah. Right now, the signage, as you know, is on the wall and they have to use the, yeah, yeah. Plus, they need someone to put the signage up there too, yeah. So that's what it is. And maybe Betty has something to add to pylon signs.
Thank you, mister, thank you, your worship. Yes, one of the big concerns about the existing high-up sign that they want to replace is safety concerns.
Causes accidents.
They don't want to raise those WCB rates.
Good. So we did park a few items. It's seven forty. Do you want to take a recess for ten minutes? Those are all the lines running through it? Yeah. It's a Honeywell, a Honeywell project. Paul Johnston, would they, he pipes, would they be connected to the district heat going into that building? Those heat connectors?
Your worship, the East Link Center, it does have some district heat, I don't know exactly what services.
Yeah, I think that's what it takes. Okay, just, and then we can come back and just go through the, what we parked? Good? Well, we want to go to operational, hopefully, keep her going. Take a ten-minute break, recess?
Let's, we're out of, Counsel Duran, you there?
Yes, I am, still here.
Okay. So, we're moving out of recess and it is a little, few minutes after eight. So, we need a resolution or consensus to extend the meeting. Moved by Counsel Beck, seconded by Counsel McKinnon. All those in favor? Okay. Counsel Duran?
In favor.
Okay. So, we've completed all the capital and we parked some of the, some items. Dan, do you want to just go over some of those items?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I think maybe we'll just do a little bit of a high-level overview.
Yeah.
And tie it into the implications for the operating budget quickly. And then go back and over, look over some of the items that I, I'd highlighted in terms of things that I believe that Council wanted to revisit. So, in terms of the overall budget, you can see here now we're net of partner funding, capital.
Just one sec. We don't have it up yet. And Counsel Duran, again, just watch it on YouTube.
Yes, I have it on, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So, he's got it up there now.
So, currently, we're net of partner funding, we're at fifty-four point eight million dollars. We started back at committee at a little over ninety million. We come back to the first council meeting and said that we were at seventy-five. And now, with, with hard work of staff and input from Council, we've, we've been able to narrow the gap. As it stands now, at fifty-five million, we'll say, in terms of the implications for the operating budget, we, we're very close. The, the, we had a forecast, we have a forecast surplus for the current year. We had budgeted on operating a four-point-eight million-dollar deficit. We, we bumped up that forecast to a little, little south of six million, so there's a little more there. The impact of incremental interest and depreciation from our reduced capital budget is now down to a little over a million dollars. So, our net residual operating surplus would be, our deficit would be about two-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand. So, you know, in, in terms of an eighty-seven million-dollar budget, this, this is, this is pretty small potato. we are, we're, we're in very, very good shape. And, you know, we're not, we're not, we're not in desperate shape financially by any stretch. And the, certainly didn't intend to convey that message. So, through the hard work and, and choices that have been made by department managers and consultation with, with council, I think we're in, in, in pretty good stead here. That being said, if we go back to the capital budget, I know that there were some items of fairly significant value that some councillors had some, some concerns with and also some other issues that, that I know, as worship, wanted to bring forward in terms of some of the projects that we had considered earlier. So, slipping back to the capital budget, I think perhaps we'll just go through each tab and, and talk about what I understood were, were the items that folks wanted to talk about a little further. So if we go to Public Works, the Sherwood Rec Hall master plan, Councilor Ron had concerns with delays in, in that. The Hertz Hall upgrades, Council Bernard would like some reconsideration there. The pedestrian crossing, Councilor Twill, I believe, expressed whether or not that that would be enough budget to cover some of the concerns that had been expressed recently. Two million in rehabilitation for the Parnell Street Parkade, Councilor Twill had, had discussed that. Bike share program, we, we had some discussion on that one as well in terms of competition with private sector and some of the concerns we had with traffic congestion, sidewalk congestion with, with some of the other services that are currently being offered. The land property acquisition, there was some more detail perhaps needed to be discussed in, in closed session. With that, roads resurfacing, we went from a spend last year of about four-point-six million. The capital budget currently is at two-point-seven with, two-point-seven-five with two-point-seven-five in partner funding. Councilor McCabe, I believe, was concerned that that wasn't enough. Streets engineering, we staff met this morning to consider some of the items that come up in the capital budget discussions and wanted to, one of, one of the concepts that, that was floated was to do a, a more, much more comprehensive parks, recreation and community facilities master plan, which would include all the halls, open spaces, connectivity and recreation. And a part of that engineering budget was for components of those, those things. We believe that upwards of four-hundred thousand could be, could be funded through the Housing Accelerator Fund, which would reduce that cost by, by four-hundred thousand. So, that, that's something that we wanted to bring. Through, funding through the Housing Accelerator Fund.
What are you reducing with that money?
The, the streets engineering budget.
Yeah, if I could just add the, that's not the, the parks plan. Instead, it's the engineering standards and, oh, the other one's escaping my mind. What's the other one, Scott?
The capital chargeback.
The. Development.
Development standards.
Yeah, so that falls under the category qualifies under Housing Accelerator.
Engineer.
Pardon me? Like the, the two pieces. So, the work that was given direction from council for the development of engineering standards, like for infrastructure across the state, new infrastructure. And then the other one was the exploitation, exploration of looking at development fees at the study that was approved not that long ago.
Okay, so that, that's phase four-hundred thousand that we had budgeted. You're saying the zero rate funds are going to cover that? Perfect, perfect, keep going, Dan, you're doing good.
No, no, yeah. Moving on to parks and recreation. Sorry, yeah, guys, you know what, Council Bernard, just direct it through here. Let him just finish and then we'll do the public works.
It's going pretty quick.
Yeah, because there's no, did we talk about sidewalks?
Okay, let's, you're into parks and rec? Let's deal with, no, let's just, just one sec.
Public works, this is public works.
Yeah, yeah, so just finish it up, is that the last?
No sidewalks.
That's, okay, just finish it up, then your last question.
Sidewalk, new construction, the manager had put off in the worst-case scenario all of that budget, so there was discussion about the five-year plan and what perhaps are the priority projects and, and council might want to consider reassigning some, some funds there.
You know, Council, just, just one, let's, let him just finish. I know, we'll come back to them, we'll come back with, so all of us can ask questions. Right now, it's, it's, it's all over the place. Let him finish the, the public works budget, that's all we're trying to do. Go ahead.
Yeah, so sorry, your worship, I was going to kind of attempt to go through quickly all of the areas where, where folks had some, had some questions or felt there was opportunity
We'll just do department by department.
Okay, sure.
Yeah. So, public works, is that done?
That's, that's the last one I have highlighted, but there may be.
Council Twill, go ahead. Which one do you want to?
I raise a concern about sidewalk infrastructure, active transportation infrastructure on Allen Street between Mr. Plummer and St. Peters Road. So, I wanted, I wanted to put that in there for a number of reasons. Residents have sent emails, we're going to public budget consultation process tomorrow night and the residents were, you know, they, they came forward with their, their request and I wanted to flag that and try to incorporate that into the budget. We have a number of senior citizens that live in that community that don't feel safe, that's, that's a very busy street and they, they, they want to have that, that infrastructure in place. Like I said, if we're going to the public consultation process, they did their due diligence. They've sent a number of emails in, a number of residents sent emails in to public works, so I wanted to make that part of this package.
Okay, so, the commitment we're making here is a budget for sidewalks and multi-purpose trails. Then that goes back to the committee that Julie McCabe, Council Julie McCabe chairs, which is Public Works, then you make that call, right? Okay, so, just one second. Is, is, is it McCabe? No, Council McKinnon and then McCabe.
She can go ahead.
You can go, you're, you're on, you're in this queue.
Just a question, yes, to the manager, for the, for multi-purpose trails, has anybody, I don't see any partner funding here, has there been any requests to the province for funding, because there is money there for multi-purpose trails?
Hi, worship, through to Council McKinnon, so this rounder isn't, we didn't make, we didn't make the last round of requests for AT funding, but now that we have our five-year plan, that's something that we will try to apply for each and every year for, for additional funding through the AT funding plan at the province.
Do you want to follow up?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you, no, just, you say we're going to try in the future, can I just put it out there, can we kind of make it a priority? The money is there, the Minister of Transportation told me that the city just has to request it and the funding is there, so we just request it and they will give us some money, so we can put that to the forefront, thank you.
Council McCabe?
Thank you. So, right now, we have zero approved in the sidewalk transportation. Three years ago, we adopted the sidewalk master plan, which was going to be a working document, a moving document, where we posted and agreed. So what we, we've talked about tonight is kind of similar to what we've always talked about, you know, approving projects, approving things and then not getting to them. The things with, these are safety things that residents are counting on in, in their community. It's like a five-year rotating master plan, I don't think we're going to get into specific projects tonight about where, because they've already been identified by staff operationally and we've accepted the plan, unless there was something that popped up that we needed to relook at. The same with roadways, I mean, we had a major discussion last year and we heard about how we're constantly dealing with problems because we're never staying ahead and it was projected and presented what we needed. I think that's the stuff, there's always going to be stuff that we agreed to a long time ago and we need, but what is our priority as a council as far as making sure majority of residents have up to, up to snuff infrastructure, roadways, but also safe, active, we're hearing that every time we're looking at development, every time we're looking at connections through sustainability design. We've approved this, but right now, we're looking at a zero allotment, that's just can't happen. We, we're just going to have to find money for that. So if that means borrowing more money, I mean, we're going to have to look at how we're going to do that.
Okay, so it's a concern that we want to, we want to concern, that's a flag that we can say we're going to put money into it? No, that, that's yes or, yes? Yes?
A hundred percent, we have to.
Okay. Council McLeir?
Yeah, Dan, can you just go back to your grid? Yeah, so, just line ninety-seven, sidewalk, new construction, so that's still blank? No, no new sidewalks?
If, if council determines that they would like to put money in the sidewalks, but currently there's, there's no, there's, we haven't allocated any additional funds beyond what the staff had recommended. So, you'll notice in the blue section here, we have the ability to just, you know, an item that staff had recommended, if council chooses to defer it, we can plunk it in there. Any additional budget you want, we'll plug it in the additional spending and that'll update the budget and then we'll, we'll have to come back probably and reconsider, you know, if, if there's a material difference in terms of what the implications are for the operational budget.
Okay. So, can we agree to put money into sidewalks? Yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to make sure though, that we have projects that we didn't complete last year that still have to be completed, so if we're not putting money in sidewalks, we definitely need to have money to complete sidewalks that work.
That's, that's what we're deciding on right now. Do we want to put money back in? Go ahead.
I thought I heard Dan say that they put money in sidewalks, that's why I was looking for the amount.
He's not there.
Did I miss hear you?
There's no money. There's zero dollars.
Yes, but, Dan, did you say that you allocated money to sidewalks since our last meeting? No, okay, I heard you, I heard you on that, okay, that's why I was asking how much.
Okay, we've parked some-ish, some, some items and now we're going to add some. So, do you want to add hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, five hundred thousand?
I think you need to know how much we have.
Well, then he'll have to go through all the budgets to do that. And we'll just have to sit here and listen until we get a number.
Well, yeah, because I, I know Hertz Hall, we've been waiting for years to get that moved. Public, the public expectations was it was going to be moved, because it's been budgeted, it's been tendered.
Okay, what do you think, Dan? Go through them all?
Well, I, I, I think we can focus on the, the forecast that we did on the operational budget when we, when we started the discussion here. So, based on the, the capital budget that we have there now, we're, we're, we're looking at running just a, a minor deficit after the, the increased capital and depreciation and interest charges for, for those items. So, if we go significantly higher, then we're going to have to come back and, and either increase fees, fines, reduce expenditures, you know, find other ways to, to raise that money, which would include tax rate changes. But right now, we're, we're pretty much break even and kind of a, we're using all of our surplus and, and a titch more, so we don't have a lot more room to move without making other changes. So, if we can, you know, tonight, if we can add a little bit here and take away a little bit there, so that in, in the end, we're kind of neutral on the total spend, then we probably call it a night and, and move on. But if, if we end up significantly more than that, we'd probably want to go back and do some more calculations to figure out what the implications would be on the operating budget.
So, so the bike share falls under public works, correct? So we said drop that. So that's three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, right? We said for the grad, that this was mentioned, for the Parnell Parkade, set a two million, because last year we budgeted, what, a hundred thousand? No.
Two and a half.
Two and a half million and spent a hundred thousand, put that down to a million. We agreed to that, correct? Take that down to a million. So instead of two million, it's now a million, correct?
Your worship, if I may, we had a conversation with the manager this morning about what that number would be, so was there a result that you were able to?
It was not indicated yet.
Okay.
It's down to a million. Okay, and what else did we say in, in public works? Then there was to add fifteen thousand for Sherwood Rec Hall, there was to add four-hundred thousand for Hertz Hall, and then Council McCabe said that the, we need more money in street, street resurface, instead of two-point-seven-five, put it up to a million, add a million on it, that's what I was understanding. Yeah, no, just one second, you want to keep the balance? And then for sidewalks? You want to add five hundred? No, but this is just, as we go, we're not going to balance them in each, each, each tab.
Yeah, I think we're going to take a couple different iterations of this.
Yeah, yeah, this.
Interacting.
So, are we all right with the million down?
I think we need to start putting something in place and then just work our way down, work our way up, whatever we need to do.
So, million down for Parnell Parkade, got it. Three-fifty, I think three-fifty is for the shared bike share, that's down. And was there anything else in?
We had talked about traffic, additional money for traffic crossing signals.
Yeah, yeah, well, do you want to add that in there too? Okay, so what, 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 what would you add? Chief Engineer, what would you up it to, where it's at sixty-four, we're saying fifty thousand, would you put another fifty thousand?
Fifty would be reasonable, I think that would give us about ten to twelve crossings, which is roughly what we did, I believe, this year, so I think it's for pedestrian signals, I think that's a, that's a good, good number for this year.
Sidewalk, we said five hundred thousand.
So.
Did we not?
The five-year plan shows expenditures of three-point-nine.
Yeah.
This year, so just, I just wanted to make that aware, that's.
For this year.
Three-point-nine million, yes, so the target, when we put the five-year plans together that were brought to committee and council was roughly four million dollars in today's dollars per year of the next five years.
Okay.
So that's where it's at, it's at four point, or three-point-nine million, to do the list that was presented and accepted by council.
Council Beck?
Can I just make a suggestion? This, this would help my brain, but we have fifty-five million, when we come in here tonight, we're at fifty-five million, right? We're starting to talk about now taking off, million dollars for Parnell Parkade, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand bike share, can we go through that?
Do, cut, make?
Make our cuts first and then see what we end up with and then we can start looking at adding back in? Because then we'll know that we've got, okay, we're, we have general agreement that we've got, we're taking a million dollars off, we have general agreement, we're taking three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand off for the bike share. So why don't we just keep going through that? Well, no, it's there, it's already, it's already in the deferred column. So keep the deferred column going by tab and then we'll have an idea how much we've reduced each thing and then we can kind of go back, is that a lot, is that maybe a bit more of a sequential, as opposed to adding and taking off and then where are we at the end of the day?
So Excel calculates as we make changes, that's, that's what Excel is, correct, Justin? So it's, yeah, it's, 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 it's doing the math for us.
Right. But I guess in just, because we're talking about taking off now, we've, we've pared down, now we're looking at, we're looking at taking down again and then putting back in.
Okay.
So maybe can we just figure out what we're going to, what we've agreed to take out?
I have, the two items are already marked. Parnell Parkade and the ride share, anything else in public works? Park, that's, those, just, we were going to reduce them from two to one million and the bike share's three-fifty, gone. Anything else that we discussed? Yeah, it's, I know, but we're going through it quickly.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we can do both, I think we can, if, the ones we've talked about, we can just add a number there, so we've talked about Hertz Hall and.
And Sherwood Hall.
Sherwood Hall, we can add them in, the, the columns are separate, so we can, we can, we can give you an idea of what.
It's just we're balancing the way through and Council Twill did ask about the traffic And Council Twill did ask about the traffic, rapid traffic signals?
Signals.
We're adding 50 to that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
15 for Sherwood Rec Hall master plan. And what was the amount you wanted to add for Hertz Hall?
Well, he's saying 400,000. But do we agree to 400,000?
The 37 is what was spent last year. Or this, with the current year we're in. No, that was just.
Your worship. For Sherwood Hall and Hertz Hall, there was a discussion this morning about tying to Parks and Recreation, the creation of a Parks Recreation and Facilities Master Plan, which ties into something Frank was asking for, Parks and Recreation Open Space Master Plan. If we created a plan that included facilities and halls, that could be covered by the Housing Accelerator Fund. So the master plan and you're looking for, for Sherwood Rec Hall could be covered under that. And then the conversation we were having this morning about Hertz Hall is the current plan was to relocate it on, on the property by the roundabout.
Well, we own property beside it. We, we own that whole field.
Right. So with the Google Maps that we were looking at this morning, so if that roundabout ever expands and you might have to move it again.
No.
The other, the other suggestion though was potentially moving it, proposing and working with the province to actually move it into the center of the new Hillsborough development where they'll have that kind of central park space.
Yeah, I think, a couple of things I think you need to know. One, the Hertz Hall became, became the heritage designation because of the hearts in East Royal. There'd be a war if you're going to move that building. That's why it's designated. Number two, the property we own and the footprint where it was supposed to go is behind where the church is on the other side of the road. We're moving it from about five feet from the road to probably 50 feet from the road. So there's not going to be any road widening in 50 years' time, whatever's going to affect it. There's all kinds of room there. So you can see it on the map, see where it's, it's, the way it's run there, they're going to turn it around and run it east-west on that, where it says group for events group. That's, that's where it's to go. We own that property out behind it. All the plans were done and I know it was prepared to go to tender last year. So I don't want to see it delayed again. It's been three years now and the people have been told it's going to be moved, it's going to be moved, it's going to be upgraded because it's been deteriorating and it's getting to look like dilapidated property on a main entrance into the city. So I know I've been barking about this for the last couple of days, but it, it was approved in the budget. It was supposed to get done, it didn't get done. I want to see it done.
Okay. So 400,000, 15,000 for the Sherwood Rec, Sherwood Rec Hall that could come out of the Accelerator Fund, did you say? No, okay. So that has to.
The plans are where they could go?
Yeah. So are we willing to put the 15,000 back in for Sherwood Hall? Okay. Are we willing to put the 400,000 back in for Hertz Hall?
Yes.
Okay, so you want to put it back in? Okay?
Yes, please.
Okay, so.
Just one second.
Yeah, go ahead, sir. Can you hear us? You might have muted yourself there, Council Dran.
Oh, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'll start. The Accelerator Fund or, yeah, that would be awesome for the master plan. But wasn't the 15,000 to fix up the ramp, the disability ramp there on the side?
Yeah.
And that, and that was being done.
Yeah. So that's back in there to fix that ramp, correct, Scott?
Yeah, it's always in.
Good.
Okay. And then the Accelerator Fund will take care of the master plan.
That's right.
That's awesome. Thank, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we move on. I don't think there are. There is sidewalks. Scott said there was 3.9 million for this year. Are we adding 500, million? Well, if you go up to a million, you're going to have to find it somewhere in the budget. Where do you want to go? No, 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 like this. This is about raising or leaving taxes as is. What?
So, and you can see in the spreadsheet there, there's the estimated cost based on factor or numbers that we got for tendering this past year, just for, for everyone's knowledge of where those numbers came from.
That's for this year?
So yes, the highlighted column right there was the year, the current year, 2024, 2025 of the five-year plan. That's correct.
So if you put the 4 million, you have to find it somewhere down the other end or we have to look at, doing something. Correct, Danny? That's it. Just one second. Sorry, Council.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Like as I stated before, like is it going to be the end of the world if some of these projects are put off to next year? Like a certain sidewalk or a certain street to be repaved? Like, do we have to do it all right now when we are tight? I, I don't know.
Council.
I'm just asking that.
Yeah.
So it's a great question. And when we put this plan together, this was done back in September, October, under discussions with, with the committee and then it came to council and that's what we presented was accepted. It, it's really, again, we identified a number of streets. We're trying to make all streets accessible for all users. And it really just depends on what council, what priorities you guys are placing and how much you want to put to it. We can always adjust this plan. It is a working document, but it would, I guess, the challenge for us is we just need to know how much money you want to put towards it and then that helps us modify the plans going forward.
What I'm saying, Scotty, is that like the new ask, like this is your five-year plan and we all, we all agree with the same as the streets, but like for the new ask tonight, like can we, I, I know some councillors won't agree, but like saying, okay, you're on the list for next year. You know, sort of follow your format, what you have going here now? And then next year, well, this is the one that we're getting all the calls on, so we have to do something there, you know? I, I don't know. I'm just firing it out there.
And great, great question. Again, we, we can always modify the challenge for, one thing we're always trying to do is be ahead of the game. And by having this five-year plan is what we're designing to. So each year, sometime this summer, we would plan to start the next batch of designs. And it's helping us get tenders ready because we need to get tenders ready and out in January and February. We've already seen Seaview Boulevard came in way underpriced compared to the last time we tendered it. We saved 1.5 million dollars. So we know by tendering it early in the year, we will save money. So again, that's why these plans are here. They can be fluid. Our, our goal is just to, or our ask from public works is if you guys give us a target number per year to achieve, that's when we will update our plan and re-bring that back through to council for, for approval.
Council Twill, you've been, pause there. Oh, jeez. Hold on, hold on, go. There you go. Scott, what costs more sidewalks or active transportation pathways?
To your worship to the councillor, it's about the same price now. When you, because multi-use pathways, you put curb and gutter and asphalt. So when you calculate everything, it's about the same unit price we use for whether it's multi-use or sidewalk.
Okay. I'd like to recommend 500,000 for active transportation pathway, add it to the, to public works budget. Pardon?
Is that under sidewalks?
It's, it's there. I saw, I saw it there earlier.
Is it under sidewalks there, guys? It's in the same one, yeah.
Yeah.
So you, you want to put 500,000 there? It, it goes for both sidewalks and act. Well, are we saying 500? Yeah. Yeah, million. Pardon me? You can't go five. What is it, guys?
At least, at least a million.
Go ahead.
And, and just, again, a million might get us two sections of six, so just.
I know. Well, but it goes back to the committee. Let's add a million and then we'll discuss it at the committee. Agreed?
We have to discuss it here.
Yeah. Agreed, a million or half a million? What do you agree to?
Half a million.
Okay, but so tell me what you want.
Are we in the red or the black?
Well, we just, what we'll do is we'll go through and we'll do the cuts and then we'll see at the end with Excel.
Do you know, do you know what? A million dollars really is nothing when you're, when you're looking at, looking at these projects. And, you know, we talk about developers coming in here and we talk about infrastructure dollars that are required, whether it be active transportation pathways or widening in the roads. We got so far behind in some of these apartment complexes that are built and, and there's nowhere for the seniors to walk. Okay? There's nowhere, and I'm not talking neighborhood streets. I'm talking streets that are extremely, extremely busy.
For kids.
Pardon me?
Or children.
Children, well, well, all demographics, but this, this is the problem that we're chasing the infrastructure game and we're always in a handicap position. So, you know, like in, in terms of priorities, we talk about safety and security for, for pedestrian traffic. And Scott, you said that's what your thesis was in, right? So, I mean, we've got to, we've got to make some inroads there, folks. We've got to make a lot of inroads.
Okay, so you're saying a million, but we got some other speakers on the line. Okay. Council Bernard? Who does? Okay, go ahead, Dan.
The question was asked where we are. So with the, the deferrals and the additional spending that we've knocked on here already, we, we've saved 885,000.
Okay. Council Bernard, then Council Beck.
Thank you. Your worship, I, I guess, I'm kind of wondering when I'm, I'm looking at the, the forecasted budget last year, the budget for 24, 25, and I don't know if we really went over this stuff, but some questions I would have is like city government. It was budgeted 4.1 million, forecasted to spend 3.5. But we rebudgeted 4.1 million, so it's 600,000 higher than what we spent. And then there's another ask for another 500,000, so that's 1.1 million. Is there a need for that to be 1.1 million? If we only spend 3.5? Is there a reason it's up to 1.46?
Is that the operational you're talking about?
City government. There's a few of them here that I'd like to ask some questions, we never really. I noticed.
Okay. Why don't we just finish the capital and then we'll go over to the cooperation where we can probably cut some stuff too, if we have to. Okay? Just practice that.
If you want, but this, okay.
Okay, Council Beck.
Okay. It's affecting.
Yeah. I, I think we got to go through, we, we've got 10 other departments that we're looking at here, plus, plus. And so we can be stuck on these individual ideas here. I think we have to go through, I think we're still at the broad stroke stages. And I think we got to go through and see what, where we end up. Dan's given us a running total of $800,000 off already. So let's keep going.
Yeah, that's.
And, and add and cut, general consensus on cut and general consensus on add and see where we land after we go through 10, 10 units. The other thing too here is that we're talking about, what Counselor Twill's saying about adding infrastructure and catching up and all this. It costs money. And money doesn't come from anywhere. So it's either we cut or we increase tax rates. And so if we're going to talk about making progress in inroads in gains, we have to be open to all, all options. And we've always heard, we're trying to work here in a balanced budget. We have to go through this and see what is, where we are, but I think the first step is getting through what we, what we're deferring and what we want to add. And then have some discussions after that as to which, how we want to achieve what we want to achieve.
Okay, so what Council Twill said, a million is going in to sidewalks and pathways, correct?
Personally, I don't think a million dollars is going to do it. When I looked at that, if Dan, if Scott can bring up that thing again, I looked, I counted five or six, those first items there, I'm counting 4 million dollars.
Yeah.
And we haven't even made any inroads down on that sidewalk.
So you're saying zero?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying that's not going to accomplish a whole lot. If we put a million dollars or if we put two or three, even two or three, may not make a whole lot of inroads. But we, we got to be realistic about what a million dollars is going to get us for those projects. I'm not saying not to put zero. I'm not, that's, don't, I'm not saying to leave it at zero. I'm saying a million may not get us much. It may, if we're going to go down that road of putting in pass, I think we have to bump it up.
Council McKay.
Thank you. I'm wondering, and I'm, and I'm just asking, but you know, the new vehicle, the large fleet, the small fleet, there's a little bit, there's quite a bit of money there too. Are we in that need time? Or is that something that we could defer for one year when you're looking at 1.8 million in large fleet or, you know, 552,000? Is there some wiggle room there just as we try to make this work?
So some of that will be, there's some things that have been ordered that we don't think are going to be here by March 31st. And so we need to count for some of those invoices. And then there's a number, we have already sliced a number of purchases off that list already. We can review that and see. But again, we'll, we're very concerned. We've invested heavily in the past number of years. We've done a lot of great work with upgrading our fleet and reducing our operation costs as a result of that. My fear is we start going back down that road again, we're going to be back to where we were about five, six years ago, which is not a great spot. We don't want to be there.
Oh, and I agree. I don't mean forever. I just mean a zero sidewalk budget is, you know, can we get away with one year if we have to be, if we have to drive an older truck?
Well, 300,000 is for police. I know that, I remember that was, we said here.
It, it is broken out. Yeah, it is broken out now.
Yeah.
Okay, Council McLeir.
Just to circle back to the sidewalk and when we have to get through this, if, if we could stick in, I know council and the committee in public works, there's a budget for 4 million dollars that was perhaps blessed or that was the intention. We got zero in there for sidewalk construction. A lot of you councillors have been around the table a lot longer than I've been. It's, I just find it, and I know we've given the mandate to try and put this budgeting together with zero pressure on the tax rate, but can we put 2 million in there to, for a working number for now on side, new sidewalk construction? I, I, I think we'd be hard pressed and all the residents have, you know, not looking for any tax increases, but they're probably expecting some sidewalk construction. So we, let's work with 2 million and keep moving through this. Thank you.
Okay, agree to two? Just one second. Do you agree to two? Just one second, do you agree to two? Good? Okay. Counsel Twill, just, is it sidewalks?
Yeah, and which, which also includes active transportation pathway.
Both, it says right there.
Okay, no, I, I agree, I agree with that. But I, I think this speaks to a broader issue, folks. Earlier, we were dealing with the Bella Lion. And Eastlake, and there were expenditures put in there that made. No sense whatsoever. And we've got to be much more cognizant of what's taking place. With, with these organizations putting in the Christmas wish list. You know, I mean, and, and, and here we are fighting it out, trying to provide essential services for our community.
Yes, so when you get to Bella Lion, we'll look through that, we'll cut that to, okay. Okay, Counsel Bernard, do you want to wrap it up, then we can go to Parks, Rec?
Sure, um, I'm just wondering the CCBF money, the one point one million that collapsed, can we put that into sidewalks?
Could you get that chart there, was it one point? One, just.
One point one.
So, your worship's heard of the council, I don't think we can put that money to it because we need to have a five-year plan that gets approved by the province. So the CCBF money, there are approved types of projects that are for this type of work. Uh, street resurfacing is one. Complete streets is, we have typically asked for a particular street to be funded, so it would have to be a new ask to, to the secretariat. To be able to apply that funding to sidewalks, so we can't guarantee that they will permit us to spend that money on new sidewalks.
So streets resurfacing, street resurfacing, which is a two point seven five? The council responsible for this standing committee, Counsel McCabe said, that's too low. So if we took that one point two and added to that, we can do it?
You could.
Yes, we can.
But I'm pretty sure it's for trails too, trails as sidewalks.
It, there hasn't been, I can think of since I've been here, that we've had a. Street resurfacing, we've been able to get away with that, that we've asked for that. Uh, but other than that, it's been particular projects, whether it's the Victoria Shoreline, Victoria Park Shoreline, that had to be, there had to be an ass to secretariat.
ICIP fund, wasn't it?
No, no, that's from the CCB, uh, CCBF fund, funding, the shoreline funding it's coming from.
Okay, so do you want the add to one point two to that CCBD? Street resurfacing? Because it's, it's limited what you can use it for. It's, these are a hundred cent dollars from. With the balance is one point eight or one point two. You can put it to street, street resurfacing. Like two point seven five guys, it's not a lot of money. You might, you cut, right, Scott, with the increase over the last not, year, two years? Might be thirty percent.
Yeah.
It's up there.
Yeah, we've had some significant cost increases.
That's why they call it asphalt gold.
And just a reminder, as we looked at, again, we talked about that committee and council, um, uh. If we wanted to try to achieve about a one in twenty-five year resurfacing cycle. In today's dollars, it's right around four and a half million dollars to get every street once every twenty-five years, so just a reminder.
So, and there's nothing else that you can use the CCBF fund for that we're not thinking of, that's, that's low and that? Low or with no dollars?
Water and wastewater.
They already get three million.
I know, you can use them more.
Well, if, if there's no other choices, I'd put it in the street resurfacing.
It's pretty restrictive, like, it's, the, the reason they did it that way because communities across the country use them for everything, building. Rec halls and everything, they, they, they just had to define it, and so it's very, and I think they're going to change it again, focus more on, on housing density. So do you agree to put the one point two to, uh, street resurfacing? So it comes to three, three point nine? Plus?
I would, I'd like to see it, long as it's fair, paving streets is fair, that'd be great.
That's done by a.
You're raising your hand to say yes?
No. I'd like to see, from public works perspective, I'd like to double that.
Double what?
Street resurfacing.
Okay, then we'll raise taxes.
Pardon me, no, no, hold it, no, hold, we've got, we're, we'll park it, right? That's the.
No, let's be realist, realistic.
And then we'll come back as we go through, because.
So you're saying, instead of three point seven million, you're going to go six point four, is that what you're saying? Or seven point four?
Add another million to it.
Let's. Do you want to add the one point two from CCBD? Okay, no, we, we have to, again, agree into it and then getting consensus and moving on, people say, well, no, we didn't agree to it. Are we agreeable to it?
I think we're agreeable at the street.
Good.
Yeah, we got to see what we have at the end.
So. Just so you know, we, we, the way the spreadsheet is set up, we don't show the additional spending because it's, the, the partner funding is coming off, so we'll, we'll bump it up by that one point one eight seven. Uh, it'll show no additional spending in the, in the total, but because we're using the CCBF to fund it, 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 it's, it's revenue neutral.
Yeah. Okay, parks, recreation. Now, we parked a couple of issues here.
Okay. Yeah, so, uh, high level, there was some commentary, uh, on the Victoria Park Plan, um, some discussion, uh, this morning as well amongst staff. Uh, the possibility of rolling that into a, a recreational facility master plan, uh, that might be, um, partially funded by CCBF. We had talked about the Gordy Griffin, uh, chiller plant, uh, for the outdoor arena there, which was five hundred and fifty thousand. The East Royalty, um, old road, the East Royalty landfill, old road restoration project, uh, which, uh, the province was going to fund through the AT fund. For the active transportation portion of it, and there was four hundred and twenty-five thousand roughly, um, for the, for the road rebuild there. So that was one other item, and those were the big ones that I recall, but, uh, council, another.
So deal with the Gordy Griffin first? Okay. Frank, did you want to address that?
Uh, no, first I just want to make a comment on the Victoria Park Plan. That should be Victoria Park Plan development, it's not a plan, we actually have the plan.
Right.
Uh, we've been actually, as we go through the plan, we're actually upgrading things, so that's what that is.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good question, what, what would be part of the Victoria Park? Plan development?
So, in, in the Victoria Park Plan, they talked about buildings that are in the actual park that needs upgrades, one of the buildings we need to focus, focus on right now is the maintenance shed. It's one of the older buildings in the park, the shingles are failing, so we have to upgrade actually all the, uh, outside shingles, replace them all, the wooden shingles. And they are in Victoria Park, so there are certain, uh, criteria we have to meet. Uh, the other, uh, portion that we need to actually do last year with all the rain we had. Uh, the overflow parking area has been a real problem area, we have to come up with some type of drainage plan. It's a challenging area because there's no stormwater drainage on that side of the park. So we have to look at other options, of ways of trying to address that. We know we need the overflow parking when we have large events at Memorial Field, City Diamond, and elsewhere in the park, it's a heavily used park. Uh, so those are the two main focuses that we're looking at this year.
Counsel Twill?
I think we, we looked at the, uh, what was projected for the Gordy Griffin Park. The, uh. Outdoor arena. I think we, we decided to park that. And, uh, we'll park it for this year. What I'm suggesting is we take the monies from that. And, uh. We had two new, two new. Outdoor, uh. Arenas. So that'd be an expenditure of about, let's say, eight hundred thousand.
Wow.
Four hundred thousand each. We've got to get into other parts of the city where people are requesting them. And I, I would like to, uh. Make that recommendation.
Okay, so you're making the recommendation to park, I'm going to want to deal with that one first, so you want to park the Gordy Griffin? You want to?
The, the chiller, yes.
Okay. And Counsel Beck, let's discuss that one, hold on.
Yeah, uh, I, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think, uh, I agree with deferring the, um. Gordy Griffin facility.
Yeah.
I think if we're going to be looking at some of these things, one thing I heard from Frank mentioned the other night was that. Part of this whole. Going back to my original understanding that there might have been a, a desire to have, uh, these. Facilities parked all around all of the wards. But. The usage because of weather and stuff like that is, has become an issue, if I, if I understood that correctly, Frank. Just nod if I, if I did, okay. So I, I would like us to take a little larger look at what kind of facilities we actually want to have. Whether it is. More of the same kind of rinks, or do we want to look at different types of facilities? I'm for facilities, putting them in, I just want to make sure that we're putting in the right facilities. That are going to get the best benefit of usage for the community, for our youth. To keep our seniors active and all those sorts of things, so. I would suggest that we just defer and not, and use this as part of our. I know Frank has, uh, there's a master plan on buildings, there's a master plan on open spaces. Let's look at that before we commit any more dollars. To that and then get a better understanding of what type of facilities we actually want. And, um, there might be a, a way of incorporating, uh, potentially multi-purpose facilities. It could be used for a variety of things, I don't know what that looks like, I don't have a thing in my head, but I, I think we just defer. We, we may end up coming back to Gordy Griffin and saying Gordy Griffin is the right place to put our money, I have no idea. But I think we, I think we park that money, don't. Outlay it on anything right now and figure out what it is that we want to look at. As a little bit of a more comprehensive view of what our outdoor facilities could look like. That'd be, that'd be my suggestion.
Counsel McLeer.
Thank you, your worship, um. Counsel Twill, you know, I'm a proponent of, um. More rinks throughout the city, however. Um, I think it would be contradictory for me to suggest that we park the chiller, uh, which would keep a rink open longer and all year. To then implement two more rinks without chillers that wouldn't stay open as long as what I'm saying we should take from Gordy, so. Uh, with all due respect, I, you know what, you know I'm proponent of this with you, but I, I can't support us putting a budget in, taking out one and putting a budget of eight hundred thousand dollars. For two new rinks this year, I, I think we're, we're debating here sidewalks and we're debating. Uh, some pretty important infrastructure things, and I, I think we need to, um. Maybe look at this one in, in, in line with what Counselor Beck is saying, whatever master plans we can, and there's any funding. We talked about some partner funding that we haven't really had an opportunity to kind of speak to. Um, in the future here, and that could be other, uh. Uh, other partners in the community that might want to help us, so. I, I just, I'm struggling with that one, and I don't think I can support putting on two new rinks this year and asking to take away the Gordy Griffin, um, chiller. To me, that would, it wouldn't, it doesn't make sense to me, so I. So I'm going to be on that one.
Counsel Bernard, then we'll come back.
Thank you, your worship. Um, thank you, thank you for that, Counsel McLeer, I agree with you. Um. Would have been nice to have this, would have been nice for the kids, but I understand, you know, we're, we're looking at things a little more important, sidewalks, streets, so on, so, you know what? Want to put it towards something else, I'm okay with that. I mean, I'd love to have it, love to have it for the kids, I know last year was a disastrous year of weather. And they never really get on the ice very often, and that was the whole premise of this, and I did talk to the government about partner funding. I got word today that they can get up to two hundred thousand, but. It's probably not the time right now, seeing that the constraints we're in, so I'm okay with. Putting that into the pot, your worship.
Counsel Twill?
I think the, uh. Just want to come back to Counselor Beck, uh, they're more than just rinks, these are multi-purpose facilities. That can be utilized three hundred and sixty-five days a year, that's the type of service that they have. So it's not just for, uh, flooding in the winter time, these are multi-purpose facilities. You can pay, play, for example, you can play lacrosse. Uh, ball hockey, um, you know, other, other sports that can be, uh. Look, it even, could even be pickleball, you know, so. I just want to emphasize, these are multi-purpose facilities, they're not one dimensional. Okay, and. We need, we need to make some progress. And having these facilities throughout the city of Cheryl Town. They're, my mind, they're a good investment. The kids enjoy it. I mean, they're getting a lot of usage out of them, I've toured a lot of these facilities. And the kids are, kids are having a great time with them, and they use them all year round. So. Uh, you know, I, I'd like you to reconsider that, um, it's, again, it's not one dimensional. These are multi-purpose facilities and they get a lot of usage.
Frank? Just before I go on to Bernard, Counsel Bernard and McLeer, uh, your, your master plan, is that, goes back to June two thousand and seven? Was there another one done? Since then?
Uh, your worship, uh, so I know you are correct, that was the last time our parks, uh, parks master plan, open space plan was completed. We've.
Seventeen years ago.
I guess that'd be correct, but we, we have requested it for the last probably five plus years.
Yeah.
Uh, this time, if we, if we did decide to put it in there, it is a more expanded plan, our last one, even though it said parks and open space, it actually did include facilities. And some other venues as well, we wanted to go into more in depth with regards to identifying, uh, sports field needs, community center needs. Uh, other types of needs out in the community along with our parks, and also where there are some gaps and whatnot.
So this, what, what's being suggested here, this new master plan would update this, correct? Is that what we would, we would be doing? That's all I want to know, is that right? And we're using money from the hat that we can use?
Yes, that would be, and we'd go a lot more in depth, that's, the last one, we were limited in what we had for funds, this time it would be going a little more in depth and making it broader. It is more than just parks and open spaces, it's actually the whole parks and recreation, everything that we actually are involved in. And you'll, if you look at our past master plan, it does touch on those areas, but it don't go in, it doesn't go into the depth that we'd like to, with regards, you know, how many sports fields do we require for a municipality our size? What types of sports fields? We know we have deficiencies in certain areas. Cricket field would be one, for example, that jumps right out.
Okay. Okay, Counsel Bernard?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, I mean, uh. And it's not to be critical, but I'm trying, I'm trying to, you know. Like, Counsel Twill, we either try and get the budget balanced or we raise taxes. And I mean, so far you want to add six million to asphalt, you want eight hundred thousand for rinks, so we're at seven million dollars, and we're running it through the second committee. Where do we find the money? That's what, that's what it's down to, so we can keep, you know, it's, it's great to have, you know, six million dollars in, in paving and five million dollars in sidewalks and three million dollars for rinks, but we, you have to find the money. That's the problem we're into tonight.
Just one second. Good?
Anyway, yep.
Counsel Beck and then Counsel Twill?
That, what Frank said, just said there exactly captures what? Oh, seven.
Yeah.
Sixteen years ago.
Seventeen.
City's hardly recognizable. Right now. And we've got an opportunity to do, to do a bit of a course direction. Setting, looking at where we are in twenty twenty-four. Saying what, what is Cheryl Town needs, we've got an opportunity, we can, we can support it, be more comprehensive. And I am for, I would love, Mitchell, you know, I've played hockey my whole life, I've played sports my whole life, I'd love to see the, the city littered. With outdoor facilities. So you're preaching to the choir. And I'll go back to what Counsel Bernard said, we have to be able to. Say what can, what can we, what can we, it's not never, it's not a never thing. It's just, is it a now thing? And I don't think it's a now thing. And let's wait until the plan comes in, let's have a look at it. And it can come back and tell us and provide us a little bit better direction in terms of where we should be going with it, so. I'm not saying never, I'm just saying not now.
Okay, Counsel Twill, we got, it, it's, I think, I think, I think there's, there's a consensus here that we can. Park the chiller. Leave, leave the, uh. Other issues and just move on.
No, I understand that, but, uh. Like, again, um. We got to have these facilities. In some of the areas in this city where the kids need it the most. And to my mind. I'd like to invest our money in recreational facilities. And have a place for the kids to go. As opposed to, uh, being lured into other activities that we don't want to see our young people be involved with. And these facilities, to my mind. Are a tremendous investment, I'm all for comprehensive plan, all that kind of stuff, but I, I also know about the disparities and the discrepancies that exist throughout the city. And, and the differences. Are humongous. So I think maybe we should be able to do both, Counsel Beck. Do a comprehensive plan and also make improvements incrementally as, as we go along. So, uh, anyway.
Can we just ask who wants to put eight hundred thousand dollars in and move on?
I, I just want to say that one of the five priorities was earth and culture, so. We, we want to look at that too, it's not all sports, it's not all infrastructure, we got big priorities, public, public safety was a priority, infrastructure. Transit. Okay.
Please keep us moving forward, thank you.
Go ahead there, Counsel Dran.
I, I'm just asking to please keep the ship going straight, thank you.
Okay, so, we're parking the, uh, chiller, okay, now the next item is what? The forest. What is it? East Royalty landfill. Yeah. No, 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 no. What's, what's feedback?
That's a lot.
Well, that's, that's been on the books for three years too.
Just.
Not now.
Go ahead, Frank.
Your worship, if I can provide comment there, so. This has been on the books for the last, I think, the detailed report, I wish I had that sheet in front of me, just give me a moment. So I believe it's.
Here it is, right there.
Your screens, you'll see that on your screen.
Yeah.
So, as you'll see the history, this, the Wrights Creek Bridge was completed in twenty, uh, sorry, uh, twenty twenty-two. And right from that point, we realized, okay, we want to have improved access to this area, there is a lot of, uh, infrastructure in the area, there's the park, uh, the Parkman Soccer Complex, the Acadian Forest and Trails. Um, there is also getting access to connecting Hillsborough and East Royalty Communities. Through a different route to try to reroute some of the traffic that all comes in through Robertson Road. And also, once, uh, once actually the East Royalty Park, once we start to actually, hopefully, eventually be able to open part of that for public use, that will also allow access to that. So we have been able to access funding, uh, through the AT, AT fund fifty percent, which is a big portion of this, connecting the AT pathway. We have the old roadway there that it still is in decent shape, that we can actually reuse the bed and whatnot to upgrade. Uh, what some of the challenges have been is that we're next to a landfill site. So there's been a lot more work required to actually see where can we move, how much can we move over, and that's what has created some of the delays. Along Hurricane Fiona created a delay, and then this year, once. we started moving forward, there was just that whole identifying that. So it is a project that has been on the books for over two years. And we do see that once this is done, it's going to connect an unbelievable AT community access. There is a lot of users in that area. It's going to allow other people to get into that area that wouldn't necessarily be able to cross a wooden bridge, which is the only one we have in the city, enter a beautiful area. The Acadian Forest is one side. If you look at the other side, it's a landfill site, but it doesn't necessarily look like it because there's trees and whatnot growing up in through the area. So it's an area that has been sort of off-limits to a lot of people for the last 20 years. I started with the city back in 2001, and initially, we were hoping to open soccer fields there. They had done the initial development. The fields settled, and were not deemed to be safe, and they never opened. And it was fenced in shortly after that. So we're eventually trying to get this area. It is a, a big parcel of land in the city, the East Royalty landfill site, that we would like to see being utilized as something else but a landfill site, an old landfill site.
Counsel Matard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Frank. Frank, couple of questions here on this one. Well, there's AT fund, funding allocated here. Will that lapse if we do not take advantage of this? Is, so that's how we talked earlier about some active transportation path funding that was not available any further. Or the, I think Scott mentioned something about it.
So Your Worship, through to Counsel Matard, yeah. So this is the last year of their five-year funding. So we would have to, it would be given back, and we would lose it and have to make reapplication again.
So we're going to, the next year would be 650, the next time we went to do it ourselves. So, or more. So we'll be walking away from 225 at the minimum at this point in time. And it would satisfy an active transportation path, which I think Counsel Twill has mentioned several times, but active transportation paths. Not sure how we, not sure how we walk away from that.
Leave it. Leave it. Leave it.
I, I would say-
Leave it. Yep, yep. And talking about after transportation, that bike share program, that was 350,000 from the ATP2 also. So we'll have to help the, that we can transfer other than the bike share. So we're going to leave it.
[inaudible]
Yep. Bike share, stay, no, leave this?
Bike share.
No, but this, leave this. Good. Okay. Anything else there?
Thank you.
Frank? That's it?
Okay, so.
Simmons Arena?
[laughing]
Sorry, put that on you.
Huh? We have the 700,000. What? That, that we didn't do with respect to the chiller at Gordy Griffin? Pardon me?
It's 550, because it was actually proposed.
All right. Can't get two, let's get one.
No, no, Counsel Twill, we're doing them all together.
What?
No, we're going through each department and adding. Yeah. So we, we-
So, so what do we say to parts of the city that doesn't have any of these facilities for the kids? What do we tell them?
Well, we can say we cut paving roads. Don't want to pave roads?
No, 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 no.
You have to make decisions.
We're supposed to, we're supposed, the understanding was, we're supposed to add one or two of these facilities on, on an annual basis, right?
We never counted.
No, no, but we said, we said, Terry, when we constructed the facility, Gordy Griffin Facility, we said, this was the model. Everyone agreed. I didn't hear one person disagree. We said, yes, this would be the model, and this is what we would use as a blueprint moving forward. We've got other parts of the city that want these facilities. They're multi-purpose facilities, folks.
And we did say that. It was a model.
Yeah, we did. So all I'm doing, this is trying to be consistent.
Yeah. And we agreed to the multi-use paved pathway for $5 million. We're not doing that, right? We're not doing the $5 million. We're going $2 million, right? So we're not agreeing, we're not agreeing right now. You just park it. Counsel Beck? Good. Want to move on? Okay.
Uh, Your Worship-
Yes, sir.
Can I ask one question? What about the yacht club? I know it's a private, private club, but what's Counsel's thought on that?
What's that?
The Cheryl Town Yacht Club, the 318 there.
Frank, can you give the update on it?
I, I know what it is. I, I know all that stuff. It's just, it's a private club, right? So, you know, what if other private clubs are looking for funding? So I'm just looking for Counsel's consideration on that.
Okay, just, hold on. Do you want to address that, Frank?
Yes, Your Worship, yeah. So Dan is just bringing up the little overview sheet there. So you can sort of have a quick review of it. But as noted, this was brought to our committee, and our committee agreed to forward it to finance for, for deliberation during the capital budget process. So initially, late in January, CYC came in and presented this project. They indicated that they, they, the project was $5.5 million. Overall, they had secured funding from ACOA in the range of 3.6 million. CADC will be contributing a small portion, 368 of the project for their section of the, of the seawall. CYC indicated that they will draw upon their bank to access $400,000 in funds. This leaves a shortfall of around one, well over 1 million. And they presented, asked the city if the city would be able to contribute 318,000 to help with this shortfall. It's about 30% of the shortfall. Since the city's Parks and Recreation Department, we have a license agreement with CYC for, sorry, for providing a dock and paddle boat, paddle craft launch area for the public, used for the last 10 years. It was deemed that, you know, it should go through Parks and Recreation. And once we reviewed it, so we reviewed and consulted with other departments, we come up with a possible option of how we could fund this. It was actually that we would enter into, enter into a license agreement with CYC, where the city would own a portion of the infrastructure where the dock and paddle launch area is located, for the term of the agreement. This would ensure that the dock and paddle craft area will continue to exist for public use. The city's funding would go to fund a section of the seawall. The exact length to be confirmed. And then would also go to fund the new gangway, which would increase it from 20 to 26 feet. The reconstruction of seawall and the new gangway, like was, will ensure that the city has safe and accessible access for public dock and paddle craft launch area, as noted for the terms of the agreement. In addition, the, I've requested of CYC if they would have space available to, for a birth spot for the city's fire rescue boat at this location. CYC is considering this, see if it was possible. And then we recommend that, that, you know, be forwarded, forwarded to, to Counsel for the consideration. And of course, if it is, city does support this, then we would enter into a license agreement, which would be brought back to the city for their approval as well.
Counsel Duran, do you want to follow up?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Yes, I didn't know all that. I, I mean, I read it. I've seen all the agreements in place. So it's just a private deal. If they're thinking about it, could it be, okay, we'll do it as long as we get the search and rescue boat there? You know, I, I don't understand. If, if you're thinking about it, but you're not committed, then, you know, once you get the money, your thought goes, right? So maybe, you know, I'm just saying, if, if we get confirmed that we can launch the boat from there, then, then I'd be okay with that. But I just want a Counsel's direction, because it is a private business, right? They're a private club. So I wasn't sure how everybody thought about it.
So Frank, is it a condition?
So Your Worship, so through to Counsel Duran, so yeah, so I've made the request yet. I can follow up to see if that is something, they were considering it. It does take a, a certain space to actually, to be able to park the boat and whatnot. So they needed to find if that is the space they would have available there. So I'll follow up and see if they have any more further discussions than that. The actual details of the license agreement have not been finalized yet. I've just, I'm looking at the old license agreement. It would be adding an additional clauses relating to actually having a section of the seawall designated as the city's for the, the floating dock.
Okay. Counsel Ramsey?
Thanks for that, Frank. And I'm in full agreement, too. Like, like they shouldn't be spinning the wheels and something if they look for $318,000 for us. And it's just, just for one year? Or is it going over two or three years, four years?
So Your Worship, through to Counsel Ramsey. So yeah, so this is just a one-year contribution when they're actually doing the capital project. We would have an agreement probably for 10 to 15 years, a license agreement.
Right.
So that we-
No, I just thought the 318.
Yeah, the 318 is a one-year contribution. So we would have, in CYC's defense, I literally just asked them probably a week or two ago, when this request came in, and I brought it to my committee, if this was something they would be able to consider. So they have to bring it to their board. It's like anything, not one person makes the decision, just like Counsel. It takes, so they'll have to go back to the board.
Well, I'm like, and I'm the same, too. Like, if, um, we can launch our boat there, like, I'm, don't hold us hostage, I guess is what I'm trying to say, is that could we get 318,000? Thank you.
Okay. Counsel McLeer.
Well, just, just to maybe, on this request for the 318,000, I just think the, we'd be hard-pressed not to support this for a $5 million project. It, and the covenants, there are the things that can be written into it to not only benefit, you know, the residents and, you know, you know, the club piece. I just think the, if we didn't do it and we had another Fiona, there'd be people pointing fingers at us saying, you know, you guys missed an opportunity. And I, I just think it's, it's hard not to support this in the, in the big picture of what it's going to do for the, the yacht club and the waterfront. Thank you.
Wow. So that could, could be the best Confederation Center, too, right? Okay. Counsel Twill.
My goodness.
Counsel Twill.
This, uh, line item, or this project came to Parks and Rec late in the game. I think it went to your committee first. So it really didn't come to our committee till late in the game. And I'm supportive of the project, but I did say at the time, as long as other projects that we put forward, we did our due diligence, submitted it to Finance Committee, that, you know, it wouldn't, we agree as an add-on, but we wouldn't subtract anything else in the Parks and Recreation Budget, capital projects. Counsel Matard, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was the, the understanding. So I think it's important to note that, once again, it came to the Parks and Recreation Committee late. Don't know why it came as late as it did and why it wasn't, you know, it went to Counsel Beck's pres, committee. That's where a presentation was made. So I, I thought, I thought it was going to be dealt with there. But nonetheless, it came to Parks. Pardon me?
Counsel Matard.
I'm trying to try and decide if it's answer no.
He's supporting it, right?
What? I support it. But I, I guess the point I want to make, folks, is that it wasn't so that other capital projects would be subtracted in Parks and Recreation. So that's, that's the true essence of what took place in Parks and Rec.
Counsel Matard.
Thank you, Your Worship. That is correct, Counsel Twill. I think it's also important to note, Frank, we did discuss, because this is a one-time $318,000 to help for the repair of that dock. We're getting into a 15-year lease. I think, I believe I asked to find out what our commitment was to retain that for 15 years in the event of another incident. Do we kind of own that property in that sense? And therefore, we have to maintain that portion of that space to the tune of hundreds of thousands, if not more, depending on another situation. Don't know if that was ever addressed either. So maybe add that to the launching of the boat requests.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
So Your Worship, through to Counsel Matard, I'll just comment on that. So it will be added to the license agreement. So we're just working to those details now. We actually have an agreement right now with them, which has conditions in it. And we would just, we'd be including the seawall portion as well.
Counsel Beck.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I support this. And just in terms of lateness, there was a time essence. The, this project was working on Fiona funding that had, I think, believe a 60-day time limit on it as well, too. So although the timing may not have been ideal, I don't think that should deter us from looking at the big picture and seeing that this is a pretty good, I think it's tremendous value for the dollar, $5 million project for $318,000 investment. Seems pretty good to me, and it makes sense. So I would suggest that it stay in.
Counsel Bernard. You're all done? Okay.
No, I just, I was just going to say, no, I'm, I'm in favor. I mean, 318,000, they get 5.5 million to fix the seawall. When you go in there, to the right-hand side, that first slip was always used by the public. And there's a floating dock that was out there. And I don't know, Frank, if the city does that floating dock on that right-hand side. But I know anytime you want to take a kayak or canoe or whatever down there, you can.
That's ours. Yeah. At the bottom of the, the club. Yeah. The picture was up there, the photo, the image.
Yeah. So that, Your Worship, that and Counsel Bernard, that is part of our public, public, public slip area where the public has access to launch free-
So I think it's a good idea. The only thing is, I, I think the-
No, other side.
Fire, that rescue ship that, that they wanted to, they have in their budget to purchase, I think that's at the naval base. I don't think it's going to be coming out of here. It's just a naval base. We keep that.
What's that?
That rescue, that rescue boat?
Yeah.
I think Counsel Duran would like to believe it's going to be able to be launched out of there. And I'm saying, no, it's usually the naval. Naval Reserve will be launching that.
Frank? I already want the CAO to answer.
Thank you, Worship. Actually, that's what I want absolute clarity on, in terms of walking out of the door today from, from Counsel in terms of instruction. So the public benefit to this is, one, the kayak, and two, is the access to the emergency boat being able to be parked there. So if the yacht club turns around and says, no, we can't do that, and we don't, we won't be able to accommodate that, is Counsel still in support of funding this project?
No, that's the condition. That's, I think that's Counsel Duran brought up, is that that's a condition we're going to check off. That has to be part of it.
Okay, thank you. So that's what I just wanted, absolute instructions of-
We're all with the same understanding. That's the condition.
Okay.
Yeah, like, we can't take it up to, up to the other harbor.
So where, where is our rescue ship launched out of now?
The, naval bay?
Our rescue craft right now is, is out of the water, but we, we keep it in Peaks Harbor. That's the-
Peaks Harbor.
Peaks Key. Peaks Key.
That's where we keep the, the vessel, shoot, summer months. And that's where it were. We talked to Frank about moving it over to this location, which is ideal for the slip.
Okay, perfect.
For actual traffic.
Yeah. And do we pay her berthing fee at Peaks Key?
We do, yes.
Yeah. Hope we'll be able to use the public slip for her, too. So you don't understand that?
Yep, perfect.
The ship has, the, the, the rescue, the emergency vessel will have to be launched from the yacht club. Okay. Counsel McLeer.
Yeah, I don't know if it makes a big difference here in the, on the numbers, but I understood when Steve Codmore and his group were in on that, on this request for the yacht club, that the 318,000, I don't think they necessarily needed it all in one year. They, they just wanted to know-
Oh, that's right.
If they could get the commitment, it could be staggered in terms of how it's paid, is what I remember them saying. So.
Yeah, it would be part of the progress payments.
Yeah, it could be scattered over-
Yeah, with the emergency-
So that's a-
Yeah.
The emergency vessel down there, too, right, chief? Be able to hang around the yacht club.
Is that just set for this?
Okay, let's go to the next one. Fire. Fire with, we got the fire chief here, chief of fire. All okay with it?
Your Worship, just a point of clarification. On the item, line six, the fire station, number three, design and build, if I understood the fire chief correctly, that work has been completed, and that was a carryover amount. So we wouldn't have any budget expenditure for the, the upcoming fiscal year. So I've removed that.
Okay.
Put a negative amount in there for additional spending.
So that's 132 is gone.
Yep.
Okay.
That, just a point of clarification on that. Once the fire under ready survey comes back, that funding there to finish the design and potentially move it to a lot, wherever that could be, would be out of that funding there for '24, '25.
Okay. We'll leave it there. So it's removed? So it's removed?
Thank you, Tim.
Okay, leave it at the same, guys? Seven- Oh, yeah, we'll, need a slip, too. Those were, the fast response craft, you flagged that? Yeah, that was to look at the funding from others, federal, other government sources. And I think Counselor Bernard is going to forward anything to Chief Tim Amy. Okay.
Well, what was the $200,000 that was highlighted in the blue?
No, that's-
Scuba?
Yeah, no.
It's just reference to a project sheet, so.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. I think we're on transit? Police, police is fine? Good? No problems?
Well, let's have a look at it.
Should be all right.
Oh, yeah, okay, yep.
What's going wrong with mine? Okay, environment sustainability. Jessica wants to get home. Anything there we have to, so could you just show the, for '25, '26, what's the net?
Yeah, so Jessica was kind enough to clarify the partner funding, looking into '25, '26, so it's reduced from what the original amount said, so looking to next fiscal year, we'd be about 4.7 for spend on those bus projects.
Okay, updated figures. Good. So we all right for '24, '25? Oh, but it's good to go?
Yep.
I just want to make sure, I want to move on here. Okay. Information technology, thank you, Jessica. Okay, so Rory's here? Nothing? Oh, wait, no, he's got-
There was just some questions on the Parkdale streaming technology, but I think those questions were answered, I believe.
Because I think that was mentioned, is there a room downstairs that is geared to host? So why can't we move the, those other subcommittee meetings down there, instead of having all three rooms?
Sure, room doesn't have the mics. You can-
I thought someone said it was-
No, it's not, it's an EMO.
Oh, but it has-
Where you don't use mics.
Majority of the technology, but not all of it, okay.
This is so we can mirror this room in there.
Yeah, well, we can maybe spend less than there downstairs.
Your worship, the other piece is public access, so the public, if they so choose, can come and attend committee meetings, so if we were to try and do that downstairs, there'd be no space for them.
Oh, okay. Okay, do we want to go with Richard, or do you want to go to the Bella Lion? Yeah, let's go. Mr. McCowan. Okay. What did we flag here, Dan?
Just the property, I think, well-filled protection budget, $2 million. And the contingency. Yeah. Didn't take anything off yet.
No. Just Counselor Matar.
Thank you, your worship, I mean, I understand what we're trying to do here, but, you know, when we were going through a situation, like there was a real eagerness and missed opportunities to purchase and the land around there, so given what the manager indicated earlier in the market value today, taking it down to a million is like another missed opportunity to address a situation that he adamantly wants to pursue with purchasing land around our wellfields. So, I mean, I don't know what the, it's kind of what, I remember that discussion very, very well, so to me, it's, where is our priority in that, purchasing that land?
Counselor Beck.
I would agree with Counselor Matar, I think I'd like to leave it there. It's there as a drawdown, if we need it, if land does become available. And I think it would be prudent on our part to take advantage, if, leave it there. It's one of these items that very well could go unspent next year. But I would like to give Richard the latitude to be able to not be handcuffed, should an important resource like this, because we've talked about, it's been talked about at the Water and Service Committee and at the council level here, too, so I would support leaving it in at $2 million, and being cognizant that we may spend a million, or we may not spend-
Just trying to say, like, again, it's to get some of those primary projects.
Well, I guess, I think I'm saying that if an opportunity arises, I think there should be something there, if we say, well, Richard, we don't have money in the budget, we don't have anything there, I think, we, no one has a crystal ball in terms of what might become available. Look at some of the last-minute arrangements that we've been presented with over the past few months, where properties have arisen, that we've had to either make deferred decision on, or try to come to a understanding as to what we're going to do, so I would recommend keeping it in, and would be my vote, but again, if people want to reduce it-
Counselor Bernard.
We can come up to consensus, too.
I disagree. I think a million dollars is lots to work with, there was $600,000 there last year, if we wanted to buy it, we could have come to council and asked for more money, we could have approved it. Now we're putting in a million dollars if land comes up that we want to purchase. I think $2 million is a little rich, but I think if something does come up and it's a little over that million, you can come back to council. But I think a million is fine, that's a lot of money.
Counselor McLeer.
Basically, I'm agreeing with Counselor Bernard in this one. We are in kind of a, it's a bit of a transition here, we're being squeezed. We, again, I mean, I'm circling back to, I'm hoping, maybe this time next year, we've got, we're clearer picture on our revenue, and maybe hopefully have this, some direction, what's going on with our funding formula, and we can maybe level it back up to two, but for this year, with the squeeze we're under, it's a lot of money, and I'm happy to take a million off that for this year.
Counselor McCabe.
And I'm okay with that, if that works, I trust Richard, I also think we need to put some pressure on the province for these lands that are surrounding our waterways and our water wells, to maybe put some moratoriums on what can be done, and how, maybe push that out a little bit more, so I'd like to see some of that happen as well, because I don't even think some of our land wells are right in our city, right, they're outsides in the province's land, and, you know, they promise, and they commit, and it's a bigger deal, so maybe a little bit of pressure on them to prevent action happening close to those, well, you know what I'm trying to say, thank you.
Counselor McCabe, I appreciate what Richard gave to us back in November, about the wellfields that we have, and he talked about the 250 days, Richard, the five years, the 25-year zones. The land that's around those 250, 100 days in five years, we need provincial cooperation to put moratoriums on these land purchases, because, or land use, like, what do smaller municipalities do, like Stratford or Cornwall, what do they do? They can't afford to buy these lands. Like, if we want to protect our water, for not just the citizens of Charlottetown, but the citizens of the island, the province has to kick in, you know, and I think there's an onus on the part of the Standing Committee for Water and Wastewater, to put together a group and go to the province, and this falls under Planning Act, which has 18 staples of interest in this act, and one of them is water conservation protection. So if the act is being changed, or they're revisiting it again for the 18th time since 1950, well, we have to make it very clear that we need, we need support. I'm just, Counselor Beck?
Yeah, so I'm just looking for a bit of a clarification, just going back to what Counselor Bernard said, and this could change my thought process, too. So if we put it, drop it to a million, and eight months down the road, Richard comes to us and says, listen, I have an opportunity, it's going to cost us 1.4, we can come back and approve an emergency spending based on that at that time, and we can come back and say, we can accommodate that?
Yeah, we've done it before.
Okay, good, okay, well, that changes my perspective then, I didn't know that we had that available to us, that's good.
Richard just finds it in his budget.
No, okay, well, I'm good with knocking it down to a million dollars, if that's the case, then. Yep.
Okay, let's go back to our favorite. Bella Lion. Well, you know what, I think Counselor Twill said that, let's just take a look at it. Yeah, let's take a look at the Bella Lion. Yeah. Where's Bella Lion? Okay, Bella Lion. So we know, we know we need the refrigeration, that's a given, right? Yes.
I really don't know what they need out there.
Yeah.
How do we really know? Counselor Bernard talked about the sidewalks, Kevin Ramsey talked about the parking lot that we reconstructed, storm owner, management, the whole nine yards, how do we really know what they need and what they don't need? What they did was they put together a list, sent it down to City Hall, rubber stamped it, and then we fight it out over other projects we want to do in our community, and we're saying, no, we're saying no, but something like this comes in, the Cadillac, let's go ahead. And I'm going to reiterate what I said before, the city's not being treated equally and fairly when it comes to the youth in this city. Some don't have access to facilities, others do, so I'm not interested in the Cadillac version.
Okay, Counselor Beck.
Yeah, we need, it's 20-some years old, it's a natural occurrence with refrigeration systems, they wear down over time. The other thing is, I think the sidewalk, I'm not sure if it's even the same sidewalk that we're walking on, that, I think it's a different sidewalk altogether.
It's the one with the pool.
Right, so it's a different sidewalk, it's not one that was just replaced, is my recollection. And the other part is, I think the parking lot is the, for the pool area as well, too. Right? Yeah, so, you know, we're talking about different projects, not the ones that have already been done, and, you know, again, going back to the facility, the other option is, if we don't replace the refrigeration system, we don't have minor hockey, we don't have, you know, rink B, okay, whatever, you know, so, I mean, heavily used, senior skates, five days a week, you know, it's just, we have to go, we have to do it. The other things, if we can get clarification on the location of those other, I'm sure emailed Alan Wood would clarify as to exactly where it's being done, but I think we, I think some of these things, we're on the hook for them at 87%, and got to live up there into the agreements.
Okay, thank you, sir. Counselor McCabe?
Well, and the second thing, it's stage two, so we've already obviously committed to this process, because we must have done phase one somewhere before we got to phase two, right? This is phase two, this refrigeration piece, so we must have done phase one, now we're into phase two, and the second thing is, we're down a rink waiting for Simmons to finish, which is going to be really exciting, and we have pretty good anchor tenants in there that depend on this ice service to be done, so I don't think we can take that and ignore it, unfortunately.
Counselor Bernard.
I just want to bring up a point here, and Counselor McLeer brought it up also, was, if you look at last year's budget, we put in $85,000 for the sidewalk on both sides, the arena side and the aquatic side, that was in last year's budget. This is coming from them, and it says arena parking lot, then tells me it's on the east side where the arena parking lot is, I know that's been done. On the other side, I'm not sure, it's in bad, tough shape, but can we not get our own staff to do it?
That's what we were saying, yeah.
It's not that big, if we're talking on the, on the pool side, it's not that much of sidewalk there. That's been done? So then they've both been done, then? Because the ones in the arena side, I walk it every day.
Yeah.
They're done. Well, you know, from the sidewalk I see, I hope they're not going to tear it up, because it's in excellent shape.
No.
So, to me, I'd take at least 90 grand in for that.
Okay. So, Dan, in last year's budget, they minus the total bill, and a net of external funding new in '23, '24, is there any net external that they've minused here?
So the external funding is UPI up here for $247, and then the commercial tenants for $111, so that comes off, the total ask of $215 is 1.6 net, so the one, the one point, the, yeah, our shares, 87% of that are a little bit less with the commercial funding.
And do they not have a sinking fund? Can we look into that, too? Capital fund?
I think originally, the intention was to set aside a certain amount of contribution each year, but it-
It expired?
It's tiny in comparison to the capital needs at this point.
Okay. So, more information? Yep, yep.
Thank you, worship, I guess I just want to be clear, and if the perception was, is that I wasn't supporting the refrigeration system, that certainly not was my message, my questions were more around the model in which our partnership is more so than anything, which drew out some questions tonight, so, you know, I fully understand that without a chiller, we don't have a rink, and I get all that, so that's not my argument, I will support moving forward, it'd be great to get some questions answered on these other particular line items that are here, that might help us save a couple hundred thousand dollars at the end of the day, but if the perception was that I'm not supporting a refrigeration replacement, that's not the intention of what my comments were.
Anyways, I just want to- Very much, it's on public record, thank you, thank you very much. Counselor Ramsey, did you want to?
My question is, how long is our agreement, like, do we look at it again? Do we run a three-year, a five-year, 10-year agreement with them?
Year by year.
Oh, year by year?
Yeah, my read of the agreement that was signed in 2010 is that there is no expiry date, so.
We just held it 87%.
So there's no renegotiations or nothing? This is what we signed on for, and this is what we got to look after?
Well, there's always an opportunity to renegotiate, but parties have to be willing to, all the parties have to be willing to negotiate. We did have a conversation with the chair of the board and the manager, he did indicate that he believes, you know, that we need to look at how the facility is funded, it has, you know, there are provincial interests here, it's a recreational facility that provides service not just to Charlottetown residents, but to others, you know, a comparison is the new rink in Rustico at $26 million, being carried right now by a population of about 800 people, but it's servicing an area that goes down to Pardalben and far east and west of where the town of North Rustico is, so, you know, I think, I think there's every reason to look at the business model, have discussions with our partners, and perhaps try to, try to build a better mousetrap moving forward, but right now, this is the agreement we're in.
Yeah, we have to deal with this budget. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, so just so, if I'm understanding what I'm hearing, we just need clarification on line 22 and line 20. The sidewalk replacement for the arena parking lot and staff lot resurfacing, are those the only two points that we're looking for clarification on?
EV charging stations?
No.
Oh, okay.
20, line 20, the sidewalk arena, that seems to be the question, what I was hearing, is that, did we do, did we do the sidewalk replacement, and did we do the staff lot resurfacing? So those two that Danny has highlighted, are those the two that we're looking for clarification on?
We took the sidewalk out.
What?
We took it out. For $90,000.
But isn't, I think we took it out because people think that it's been done.
Oh.
Okay, so are we saying, are we saying take it out because we don't want to do it?
Then he'll look into it. But I think we said earlier by Counselor Bernard, or Counselor Twill, that the sidewalk replacement arena parking lot, take it out.
Okay, so that's what I think we have to get clarification on, is Counselor Bernard's saying that it's already done, I'm reading this that there's still a need for some sidewalk replacement, kind of going back to what Counselor Twill was saying, should we have some kind of assessment of what we actually need here? of what we actually need here? I really don't know. I really don't know whether we're approving, right now, based on the discussions, I don't know whether we have, should be approving this or should not be approving this. So, I think for the sake of two items, I could probably be quickly answered by Alan Wood.
Yeah.
Find out an answer and say, should be...
We'll have to come back to finalize it, we'll have to come back to finalize the budget. So, in the meantime, they'll...
Yeah, exactly, that's exactly what I'm saying. So, let's, let's seek clarification. Don't say yea or nay. But seek clarification, and then when we come back and finalize things, go ahead with the refrigeration, the other items, and seek clarification on those.
Counsel Bernard and then Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, I just wanted to get clarification. Dan, did you say that the carry agreements that we have is, did no expire?
That's my read on the, on the agreement. I did pull it out, and the, the new agreement from 2010 doesn't indicate any expiry date.
No.
Because I thought they were 10-year agreements.
No. No, I never signed one when I write. It's still year by year. Well, that's just one sec, hold on. Some questions.
I just saw that EV charging, do we not have something where we put EV charging stations somewhere? Why are we buying $28,000 worth of EV charging stations? We have charges stations, I think you were going to put one at Malcolm Dare Community Center. To me, if they're looking for $28,000, let's put it over there. Can we not do that?
That's, Jessica can talk to Dan about that, or, okay, Jessica? Yes.
Yeah.
Can't be working in silos. Counsel Twill?
Just follow up and Counsel back. Nobody here is disputing whether or not we need the refrigeration. I mean, but we, have you seen, Danny, have you seen any correspondence from their consultants?
No.
Have you seen any correspondence, any evidence whatsoever, that the refrigeration has to be replaced this year?
Just the discussion with the manager and the Chair.
Just, I know with the manager, I know.
No, I've seen no engineering reports, but they may have them available.
With, with the wish list that's presented here tonight, has anyone walked in and done a comprehensive review to see what is actually required and what's actually part of the wish list? Do we, do we have anything like that, so that we can make an informed decision?
Do we have that? I think, Danny, we have, I think we have four members on the board. No, 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 hold on, no, there's a board that oversees it.
I got the floor.
Yeah, the board oversees it.
I got the floor.
And they made a decision they needed. So, what do you want?
You know, I'll try it again.
Yeah.
We got four members on the board, okay? They're not elected, we are. We're the ones approving the expenditures. So, I'm going to try it again. Have we have any evidence, any analytical evidence whatsoever?
No.
So, we have nothing. So, you know what? Jeez, we're playing Santa Claus. Really and truly, we're playing Santa Claus.
We're, we're relying on the due diligence of the board, the carry board.
Yeah, that's, that's why we appointed the board. And we passed resolutions in this chamber to select four members. It's, it's a duly-appointed board. Now, we're questioning the board. What we'll do, Dan, as we've already said, we'll get an evaluation on this one, and I think if we go to the East Link Center, are we all right with that? That's coming off.
And ask them why that's there.
See, we were told early to take it out, so now park it, and then we'll talk to John. Okay? Okay. Okay, so we'll have to come back to ratify the capital budget. Can't do it, now, just one second, just one second. We can't do it tomorrow, because we have the public house, or we have an open house from 6:00 to 7:30. Now, if he's wanting to come back Friday, I'm hoping.
We cannot adopt the financial plan any sooner than 14 days after the public meeting. So, the 28th is the, is the first day we can adopt it.
Yes. So, what we're presenting tomorrow at the, at the open house is just drafts?
We will present these as drafts, yes.
Yeah. So, when do we come back? Now, just one sec, Monday? Good. 5 o'clock? Well, Julie, Counsel McCabe, we're just, that's what, that's what we're discussing here. Trevor has an issue, because he works till 5:00, and I think Counsel McTart works till 5:00. So, that's why we wanted to start early today, but both, and I have to respect their work. You know, and, right, Counsel Twill? Some people work, and I appreciate them. So, we can go to, we'll leave till 5:00? 5:00, no, I, he said 5:00. Monday. No, 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 that's, that's... Is that the 17th? St. Patty's Day, it's the 17th. No, obviously you're not Irish. It's the 17th, by, me wife told me, me wife told me. Okay, the 18th, we'll meet at the 18th at 5:00? No, we're doing the 18th.
I'll, I'll be at a province, but...
We need... No, 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 we have to look at staff too. So, Dan is not in town. Dan has to be here.
Unfortunately.
No, he's, he's gone Saturday, the 18th, 5:00 PM. And Eleanor, could we also have the operational that we'll deal with right after? Okay. Counsel, back.
Counsel McAteer is...
Just, well, wait now, just, just to hang back to the East Link Center, the 950 on the repair heat pipe connectors, which I know nothing about. And I'm kind of thinking about the chiller, I mean, I get the chiller goes, you got to have it. Like, could the, how, how big a risk or what dose are we rolling if we, if we said we're taking the 950 out for heat pipe connectors this year? Is that a, is that a play?
We can't do that.
I'm asking the question, so we can't do it?
Well, phone John Abbott, just say, can you cut the 950 out? Yeah, anyways, Dan will find out. Okay, Counsel...
I just, that's just asking a question.
Yeah, he will ask the question, because we have to review it. Counsel Beck, did you want a question, you're free to...
Just two things. Dan, do you have an updated number there? Like, as we were going through, did, after all our gazetas, did we, do we have a new number? From 55?
Yeah, we're down to 54 and a half.
So, we shaved a million off, basically?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. So, as far as next week goes, I mean, we have Monday. If we have to look at other dates, is there any other dates that, or would we just go into...
We'll just leave that to Monday.
So, we just, we go evaluate this on a day-by-day basis?
Well, hopefully on Monday, we'll finish the capital and the operational, because on the operational, we spent how many hours?
Not, not much.
Well, we got an overview, now we'll be able to go through it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't know if we're going to be able to get through both, and given the amount of deliberation that we've had, and I know we've gone through a lot, we've gone through a lot of lines here, but at the end of the day, we're going to come back with a fresh look at two revised things, two revised budgets. And I'm just thinking that we might, we have, we'll probably have to be prepared for another night.
More dates?
After that, more dates.
Yes, yes.
So, I just, I just, so we'll just evaluate that as we go along, and then make that determination on a day-by-day basis. Okay, okay.
You have a good point. As opposed to getting here and trying to look at all the new numbers, can we get this updated? I know it's asked a lot, today's Wednesday, and I mean, can we get it, all the updated figures, capital and operational, so we can review before we get here?
Dan?
Yes, we certainly can.
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
And you'll be calling Kerry, Bella Lion?
Call Kerry Management and Bella Lion.
Call John Abbott.
Get those items clarified, and we may ask them to attend Monday night.
Any other calls you have to make? I think that should be it. So, instead of closing this meeting, we're going into recess.